I've done a tremendous amount of research, particularly out on LinkedIn, for those of you that are familiar with that. Really honing in on entrepreneurs and prospective business owners is I feel that there's a whole new wave of budding entrepreneurs out there. I did a test communication a few weeks back. I just introduced the Economic Development Commission in 2020, putting some of our goals and highlighting Tom's story. And just from about five minutes of work, free work, sitting on my couch at the coffee table, we got about 8,000 views and I got about four direct messages. And it resulted in going conference call throughout the week. So that's just an example of being more proactive and I think that's gonna help us tremendously. On that topic, the proactive outreach as well. I just wanted to recognize that Tom resident here is Zach Dyson. Just put your hand there Zach, it's good enough. So Zach is a Tom resident and he's been gracious enough and generous enough to volunteer some of his time. He's not affiliated with the commission directly, but he specializes in visual storytelling, largely with video, but then also distribution of that visual storytelling through social media. So Zach and I have spent some time together and he is consulting with me in some strategies that will be best. And we go through 2020, we're gonna have a series of posts that I just mentioned. A little slipper, often we had before that basic photo, but maybe some video highlighting Tom's story. And my main goal here is just in a minute, we're gonna talk about our goals to develop Tom's brand. And my main goal is with the help of Zach, is to really develop that distribution channel. So that once we arrive at a brand, once we package a brand for Tom and we say, okay, here it is, I wanna already have a distribution channel in place via social media to push that out there. So that's really my goal with that. Just mentioned, our second topic is really to work with you all here, the town manager and the town council, to really arrive perhaps through a consultant, perhaps through some other input, to arrive at a brand, a simple brand. Who are we? What do we want to be? How do we wanna tell our story? And really a one pager and some digital documents as well. And I look forward to working with this town council on creating that brand throughout 2020. And I think that's really an urgent one, because I think that there's just a lot of opportunity out there. And I'm not talking about, you know, major scale development, I'm talking about filling vacancies that we have. And I think that the tools are right in front of us if we arrive at a brand, arrive with a distribution channel. So excited about that. And then last, but certainly not least, one of our topics is to really further engage and regularly engage our existing businesses in town. With a main purpose of getting feedback from them, what's working well? Are there any barriers? Are there any things that we can propose changes with? And the way we're going to do that is we wanna have a simplified, we'll call it a business farm, one, perhaps two, in 2020, where we just gather live business owners in town and get feedback and what's working well, what's not working well. We also wanna have a great presence out in the community, perhaps a table to celebrate Tom. We also have an idea to do one or two of our EDC meetings from an existing business in Talon, just to kind of further that outreach and, you know, let people know that we're there, we're listening. And, you know, I think it just gives a great reception that we're here and we're here to help. So I would say those are broad topics and some of our goals as we go into 2020. And to be honest with you, being affiliated with this commission, since late 2016, I think this is the year, this is the period where I'm most excited about working on this commission, because I think that we really have a solid strategy, we have a modern strategy, and I really think we're gonna make it. So that's what I have. Any questions for me while I'm up here?
Just a comment that I appreciate everything that you do. I mean, it's something that Talon has a lot of opportunity, is, I think, is a burgeoning community, has a lot of opportunity for commercial development and other development, economic development. And I think that the, what you're doing with your, with your committee is outstanding and it's very much aligned with what we as a council are looking for, so.
I do appreciate that. And a little shout out to Tammy as well. Tammy and I have connected on a number of occasions. She's our liaison from the town council to the Economic Development Commission. We are absolutely on the same page and I think we will share about the same things that come.
Yeah, I wanna thank you, Todd, and I haven't met you yet Zach, but you're in the meeting. I'm sure we'll meet. So, you know, I've been doing EDC regularly since you come in the chair. I only went to a couple of meetings beforehand and the work that you guys are doing is imperative. You know, like understanding what we can do better, how we can remove barriers, small businesses talk, you know? And to be able to bring that in, you guys have been, the stuff that you're talking about is, it's the next step. It's stuff that we just haven't done yet, you know? So it is the next step of how do we get there? And, you know, working in the community and that, you guys are doing great stuff and I think we have a lot of synergies in our goals and your goals and I think we're gonna be able to work well to kind of bring some of that to fruition and I'm looking forward to it. Although next time we're gonna do a picture, just let me know so I'm not wearing my cadious sweatshirt.
I know, I know.
Posting a picture, here's Talon, and I'm like, hi. Yeah.
We'll graduate to video next.
Okay, yeah. Make sure I know about that one.
But just a further comment, really crossing over, you know, when I'm not doing this, I'm a living in financial services and insurance. And one of the things we quickly realized over the last few years was that people aren't coming to you anymore, they don't need to. So nobody's gonna go out there and go to talon.org and fish around and see what's available. So we need to put it in their face, it's gotta look nice, it's gotta be interesting, it's gotta be visually engaging. So that's kind of our strategy point as we go into 2020 and we'll have some fun doing it as well.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Todd.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, 7A2, update on Burge Row Primary School. I have a handout, I know. Do we get the free color one?
Yeah. So I'm Katie Murray, I'm the chair of the Burge Row Building Committee. And I'm here to give you an update on what's going on with the Burge Row project. This memo is three pages long, plus its timeline at the end. So I'm just gonna go through it really quick. Right now, we are currently in the design phase, although we are like so close to coming out of design. The construction documents, which are the final documents that contain every single detail about building the school, have been published. And currently, the building committee members and the construction company and a lot of town officials and the state are all reviewing the 2,000-plus pages of construction documents. These documents do need to be officially and formally approved by the Board of Education, the building committee, the project architect, the superintendent, and various town officials who need to sign off on things like building code, fire code, etc. And the deadline to have all that approved is February 12th, so it's kind of fast. And then, just for fun, the next morning on February 14th, the architect takes these documents to the state for their review and hopefully an approval. So that's where we are in terms of design. Coming up, kind of looking forward, we have phases four and five, which are FFME, fixtures, furniture and equipment, and technology. These are exciting. And these are things we're gonna start discussing towards the end of this year. The budget, this is the one part, right? So the overall project budget is $46 million. That's all the money we have. We made it incredibly clear, we don't have any more money. So we're moving forward with this budget. We currently have contracts with the architect, the construction firm, the owner's rep. And all of these contracts are within the $46 million budget. The fun part about the budget for this project is because it's an emergency project and we're moving at an incredibly accelerated timeline. Normally budgeting wouldn't have been done this way. So we're using budget, the original budget that we've been looking at is based on calculations that the state put together, based on square footage and the original building. And so now we're in the process of getting a budget that reflects the construction documents, which is kind of what it looks like. So we are in this process now. There are a couple of town-related costs in this project, as you probably are aware. Things like bonding, insurance, testing and special inspections, there's some legal costs, those are all coming out of the town side and those are still, we're still within the $46 million total project budget. We do have a modest contingency on the town side as well for unexpected things. We've had a few small unexpected things come up already, but we have a contingency there that hopefully will be enough. And then the construction portion is obviously gonna be the biggest part of this budget. And the construction company, which is the motto, has given us so far a detailed, how much is it gonna cost for concrete in site? But that is a very small part of the budget and of the project. They haven't had sufficient information to give us a good estimate for the rest of the project. And that's what they're working on right now. And they're working very hard on it. I got an update today, cause I called and phoned them. And nobody has any numbers yet, which is, I'm being, I'm being very patient with my English, so I know, trying to be really patient. To be fair, the construction company has had the construction documents for six business days now, so they, they might have told me how many hours that was. So they're really doing the best they can with these documents. We are expecting to see an accurate estimate on February 11th, when the building committee meets again. And I have asked for updates, interim updates, and so far there aren't any ready, so we're holding tight. Everything they keep telling me looks good, though. And the state has been very clear that this project is going to stay within $46 million and they strongly believe it can do so as designed. So if the state keeps telling me, we're in a good place, we're on track, everything's gonna be okay. I would like to see the numbers to show me that, but I can't see them until February 11th or very close to that date, ahead of that date, not later. That's the one side of the budget. Oh, there is a contingency on the construction side as well for unanticipated construction costs. You know, this is kind of where we expect to see the biggest unanticipated section of costs and they have, there is a contingency there that hopefully will cover all of those. The town has been awesome with us and worked on this project, so shout out to everybody who's helped, thank you so much. We currently have a wetlands permit that was issued on, in December. This permit has a number of conditions. Some of those conditions will be met by the building of the building of the project. Some of the conditions will be met from the town, things like maintenance of drainage areas, that's a town-related requirement, for example, because it's a long-term requirement. And we did have a meeting a couple of weeks ago with Mike and the facilities staff to talk about, you know, breaking that out in terms of where and how that will be taken care of, but it sounded like that was all doable, which is good. Public Safety has met with us a few times, they have had a number of requests to ensure that we're gonna have a very safe building, which is the whole point of this project. So for example, we have some safety improvements that are already built into the design. There's an emergency access road that is going to go around the back of the building. That road will be gated off, will be for emergency access only, but the current, well, the school's gone now, but the old school did not have 360 degree access for emergency vehicles. This school will, which is definitely a step in the right direction, good news. We worked with Public Safety to make sure hallway colors were appropriate for orienteering inside the building in case of an emergency. This is just so if there is an emergency, first responders know where they are and when they call in, you know, they can identify where they are based on colors. Rather simple thing to conform to the design, but we gotta do it early, because you don't wanna change that later. So there are other safety measures that are required by the state that are also being incorporated into this design, of course. And there are a lot of safety requirements from the state. Those are all being taken into account and included in the design. We also went to planning and zoning for an 824 review. We've done this twice for this project now, so I think we're really covered. We did it once in April last year. That was under the assumption that we were gonna basically replace the building almost exactly as it was. During the design phase, to meet the educational requirements, there have been some minor modifications to the site and the layout, so we went back to planning and zoning to make sure they were updated. As to those design changes, one of them was the road, go all the way around, for example. And they were, the planning zoning commission was very happy and we got another favorable review from planning and zoning, so that's good. And as I said, building officials or town officials are now reviewing the construction documents to make sure they're compliant with building code, fire code, health code and 504 compliance. And we anticipate getting approval on all of those things February 10th-ish is the, that's when we're, that's when it's on campus. So for any of you who drive out of school all day, the old building's down, it's gone, construction debris, I believe, is, is not completely removed, is removed, is on its way of being removed. They're blasting out or, I don't know, however they do it, taking out the old foundation and footings and all that stuff is coming out now. The foundation and site work is scheduled to begin in February and the school is, we are on schedule, as we started this project, to be ready for the board of ed staff to move in on August 23rd, 2021. So we're still on schedule for this very, very aggressive timeline. And the state tells me we're gonna stand schedule, so I'm holding to it. There are a number of safety protocols on the site. As you can imagine, there's an active construction zone adjacent to a temporary school building. So there are a number of security and safety measures that are in place. We've talked to the construction team about various things they're doing, it's kind of impressive at work in construction, so I think it's impressive anyway, about all the different things they do to make sure the site is safe. They're gonna continue to do so. I was at a meeting recently where we were making sure that the school calendar was on file with the construction team, so they knew which days there were gonna be people on the site for school and which days there weren't, especially over the summer when there's gonna be a lot of activity on the construction site, that they'll have a little bit more breathing room, as you might imagine, to move things around. And the construction company is also very aware of the bus schedule. So they're coordinating deliveries and any large traffic influxes they might have from our construction side to not happen during bus time. So we don't, you know, delay any kids or parents or anything like that. And then the last page is, as Tammy wrote, my fun, color timeline, which basically is an overview of what I just said. The one thing that we have, I didn't specifically say, but is on this timeline, is we are expecting a final GMP, which they tell me is gross maximum price. Apparently this is a very important thing, so I wrote it down a couple of times. A final GMT, GMP and schedule of values, we are expecting that sometime in March. I'm trying not to book them too much, because I really want them to get the construction estimate done. So sometime in March is about the best answer I can get, but that will be the maximum project price from a construction point of view. And will be more detailed than the estimate that we're gonna get in February. So that's the update I have on Burge Row. I will say that the design of the interior of the building and the exterior building, the landscaping, the playstation, everything looks really cool. It's gonna be beautiful. And they're really working very hard, both the state, the contractors that we hired to work with us, the architect and the town, to make sure that, you know, they're doing right by us. This is an emergency situation and that's being recognized and honored very well. And I think we're gonna be very pleased in August of 2021, when we get keys and can move all of our teachers and kids back into that building.
Do you have any questions?
For the public's knowledge and for people at home, where would they go and visit and hear about any updates as the process moves through to finishing the projects?
So there, there is a website, I think it's burgerowormprimaryproject.org. It's on both the town site and the board of ed site, so I'm sorry if I don't know the exact web URL, where there are frequently asked questions and documents posted. I will say that updates on how things are going hasn't been our biggest focus and I apologize for that, but we've been focusing on getting it done and with the timeframe we have, that's been very consuming. This is something that I've already started thinking about for after March, to try to make sure we figure out ways to keep the community updated on it. Because I get questions all the time, as you might imagine, I mean, I get stuff in the grocery store, you know, at the swim bubble, wherever I am, people ask me about it and that's great. I'm so happy to see that people are interested. And this, I agree, is an area where we haven't been able to kind of live up to a level of expectation I would like us to, where we are getting people updated, but I hope that's coming.
Thank you.
Yep. And also, you're spending a lot more time than just in your meetings, along with everybody else on your, they do it a lot more. So just wanna say thank you for all the extra time and effort. I know it has interfered quite a bit with personal life and grocery shopping, but it's truly appreciated, the Herculean effort you and every other volunteer and staff member who has put into this project. We really appreciate you guys making sure our kids are safe. Thank you.
I would echo what Brenda said, I mean, being the liaison for the, actually being a member of the, of the committee, that the committee is really working hard and with Katie's leadership, they've really been very focused on getting the, getting the project done on time and on budget. There've been a few issues that we've had regarding the budget and after we've discussed some of the issues, and I'm sorry I didn't respond to your email earlier, but you've covered everything that we needed anyway, that there was a few special meetings that we were looking at that we ended up putting off until, to provide the contractors and all the people involved in getting us the final CDs and other information, so that we can act more accurately as a board and have the information that we need in front of us, instead of just spinning our wheels on it. So thank you for, you know, being the liaison that you are, dealing with everyone, especially the state, because I know that's, you know, can be difficult at times. And, you know, that we're always here to help you with whatever you need.
Katie, do you know where the access road is gonna be on the other side? I'm assuming you said it's gonna be 360 access and we didn't have it before. We have the access road that came in from, at one area, but is it gonna be on the other side of the school?
So what I'm referring to is a paved road, it's gonna be 15 feet wide. So if you were on the old Burge Row site and you were near, say, the playground, the blacktop kind of extended. So what's gonna happen there is there's gonna be a blacktop area for kids to play on and then kind of extending from the blacktop, there will be a 15-foot wide road that goes all the way around the back of the building and will go into the parking lot by where the FRC entrance was. That parking lot is, is going to be there. Right now it's where the construction zone is and it's going to be ripped up and replaced, because it's getting a lot of wear and tear, but it'll be a road that goes around the school, which will be accessed from the parking lots. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. I was thinking that there were, a road was gonna be.
Yeah, I know what, I understood what you were saying. Right now, the, the site has one entrance and the site will continue to have one entrance, but with the modulars, they created a second kind of gravelly entrance and they put a lock, there's a gate and a lock on it. It sounds like Public Safety would strongly prefer that we have either that exact entrance as a secondary emergency-only entrance or somewhere else. My, you know, I'd rather not take down more trees if we don't have to, but that's a conversation that we haven't really finalized yet, but I do believe there will be a secondary emergency-only entrance to the site as well.
Okay. And then the only other question I had is, you mentioned the $46 million budget and that the state was all good with that. And I know we were trending a little over, so are they looking at changing the construction or are they just thinking that it's gonna come down to minutia and then it'll come under?
Yeah, I think it's more than minutia. Certainly, the original estimate we saw was, was more than minutia, over $46 million. So there's some work to be done. So what, how this has been explained to me is the construction firm was given design documents, which were about like 75 pages of drawings, with some conceptual overviews of various things. You know, there's going to be X number of bathrooms, there's going to be, you know, X number of classrooms, there's going to be a gymnasium. But having the exact details of what is involved with all those things is what was missing. So what I, what's been indicated to me, and it hasn't been said straight out, so, you know, don't take me exactly at my words, but what's been indicated to me is that the original estimate, based on the design drawings, was high, because they didn't have enough details. So they were giving themselves some, enough wiggle room to kind of make sure that they didn't get caught in a bad budget situation going forward. Perhaps they gave themselves too much wiggle room, sort of what I'm seeing right now. And from what I am hearing from the state and from the architect and from the owner's rep, everyone sort of likes to nod their head when I ask this question and, and ask, you know, was there, did they overestimate? And everyone sort of says, so no one is saying anything, but that's, that's what I think has happened, is that the estimate was over so that nobody got caught in a bad budget situation, but maybe a little bit too much. So again, I don't think that we're going to do substantial changes to the design. We do have a number of items that we've already kind of trimmed, they call it value engineering. And so we've already done some value engineering on the, on the design and that's great, we're gonna keep those items. Things like their cabinets in every classroom, do the cabinets that are above, you know, four and a half feet, do they need locks on them? Maybe not. So let's not put locks on the upper cabinets, just on the lower cabinets. That saves us some money. They've done some design changes to simplify some of the, like floor design, you know, instead of having three different patterns on a floor, we're gonna keep it to one pattern. That, that's gonna save us a little bit of money. So those items have already been discussed and incorporated into the construction documents. At this point, we've done a lot of trimming and the architect says, says that they built a very straightforward, not frivolous building. So everyone feels really, really confident that this is gonna come in under $46 million. And I wanna see the numbers too. I'm like not comfortable not having these numbers, but I also know now that we have to give them the appropriate timing to get us accurate numbers, or we end up in a situation where people are upset, concerned about numbers that may not be really true.
And just sort of, you know, build on that, I think that the committee was pretty, I would, I mean, I'm gonna openly say it, we were very clear within, and Katie could echo this and correct me if I'm wrong, that there will not be anything that would be considered as $46 million, not $46 million and one cent. And Mike was there as well and that it was something that I, I don't think that we could be any more clear, other than branding it on them, that this would not be, there will not be another penny over that. So I think that they have fairly clear marching orders and that they're doing the best they can to make sure that they stay within budget and not time.
I wish you guys nothing but the best with that.
That's right.
A couple meetings today, so you know.
I'm just a long for the right.
Yeah. You know, mother who's there.
Yeah. I think it's, I think we're gonna be very happy when the estimate comes in in a couple weeks and then when we get real numbers. But overall, I think as a community, we're gonna be thrilled with this building that we get. And I, I think our kids are gonna be in a really good facility and our community will have a great building that we will be able to use as a resource, so I'm thrilled about that.
Thank you, Katie.
Let me know if you need anything else.
Well, hang on.
All right, moving on to reports of town council liaisons. Brenda, are you ready?
Yes.
You're not, we can start over there.
No, I'm gonna do planning and zoning last, I have six. First land acquisition has not met, there was no, no report. Sustainable CT will be meeting, I believe, next month. Can I write on that? Oh, I thought that was it.
Oh, I forgot that was it. Um the complete count committee, we had a meeting today. My pen exploded on my hand, sorry. Um and we went over something. Where is it? Here we go. It's a last to report. Um the biggest part of the complete count committee for the um 2020 census was about our communications subcommittee. We were discussed um what we want to communicate about the census, when do we want to communicate to the um residents, how we're gonna communicate to the residents and businesses and um visitors to our town and um important safety in- information. Um what's communicate basically, you know, what is the census? Um why should we be participating in the census? Um how to participate and um send reminders. Uh we all know that the data that is collected is um used for many things, some of the most important things are representation and funds. Um without representation and funds, we can't do as much as we would like as a committee um or even as a state. So it's very important that everybody gets counted. Um we listed tons of ways to communicate with our residents. Um everything from uh electronic means, e-blasts, um videos, uh the webpage, et cetera, to working with our um community partners. Um any civic organization in business that wants to help us send this information, we'd greatly appreciate it. Um there's also jobs available to people, if anybody is looking for a job currently, since the workers are making 23.50 an hour. So it is um a very nice part-time job. Um and they're in the process right now of hiring people, so if you wanna get in on the queue, you need to do that now.
Bless you.
Um and then I also wanted to share, while I have it in front of me, some important safety information. Um you're going to receive in March an invitation to participate in the census. Um you'll receive either a postcard or will be receiving some paper information. Um the if, when it comes, it'll be a light blue in color, so just be wary, look out for bigs and broads. If you do not respond to that invitation, someone will be coming to knock on your door sometime between uh May and July. You'll be getting a home visit for those people that are making 23.50 an hour. Um so please go ahead and um save us some resources, save yourself some time and someone coming knocking on your door by filling out the invitation as soon as you receive it. Um there's a lot more to that, if anybody has any questions specifically about the census, uh Mike and I are co-chairs. Um we've been more than happy to answer any of your questions later and you'll be seeing more information showing up on our webpage. We have um when you go to talland.org, top left-hand corner says 2020 census. So um light update. Um we had one resident come in and discuss a complaint against his property. And we found out that even though we are very diligent, we go to take pictures, sometimes we don't end up getting the complete information. So it was great that he came and talked to us, cause we thought that the car that was parked on his property was actually rusted and we found out that it was actually detailed. It was paint that ended up looking like rust from a distance. Um so we were able to talk to him and remediate that situation and it was very nice to be able to talk to a resident uh about something that's nice. There was a great story behind his car um and and why it was detailed that way. So it's not often that we get a chance to have a happy um and uh very interesting conversation with residents, but it was a good thing. Um and the last one I have is tourism. So I just came, I just apologize for being late, I was at a tourism meeting. Um we are working with the Central Connecticut Tourism Region, uh which is one of three regions in the state. Um this is a a quick story. As you can tell, I'm probably not a runner, but if someone came up to me and said to me, if you run in the side of the road race and every person that you pass, you have to pay a hundred dollars, I'm not gonna train, am I? There's no way I'm gonna train to be able to run a race and just fork out a hundred dollars for each person I pass. However, if after I give that person a hundred dollars and I spent some quality time with them and talked to them and they turn around and gave me an average of 338 dollars in return, I have an incentive to go out and run. Investing in tourism um for the central region has that type of return on investment. You invest a hundred dollars either in cash or in in time, we end up getting 338 dollars in cash as a return. So it's one of the things that we should be keeping our eye on for this region. We don't, you're thinking what kind of tourist attractions we have in Talland. We have businesses here that rely on um both our residents and the people that travel from our region and go to Yukon, et cetera. So um things like the Talland Inn and um our pizza restaurants um and other places, the the red and white, they rely on us to be good ambassadors. So please, be that hundred dollars, be that investment, um put that commitment in back into our community, speak positively of what we have here and share, because it's not just us who are spending money in our town, it's everybody else that comes through here. So let's capture them. Um so that was all of them. Ah, planning and zoning, oh yes. Thank you. Thank you, oh, planning and zoning, yes. The biggest thing about planning and zoning was um discussion of the um uh our goals. Um I don't know if you guys talked about this with the EDC, again, I'm sorry I was late. Um but they had a question and and light committee also posted to me. Um they were questioning the wording about the email that you had sent, Mike, um about asking for the plan for the goals. Um they were worried about it sounding like they needed to align their goals with ours. Um and I said that that wasn't really what was happening, that what we wanted to do is try to find out where there was overlap. Okay, so some people are a little concerned, you might wanna um, I don't know how to fix that. Um so they gave me a lot on the goals. One of the biggest things that they said about the goals is um they're in the middle of working with a consultant to do um, I think it's five months current, I think it's five months worth of um consulting work. It's it's the second meeting of every month, um I think through the end of the summer. Um and they're gonna be taking a look at um a lot of changes to the planning and zoning regulations and about ways to help um our town. We might be doing dual work. They asked that maybe we take a look at what their objectives are with that consultant and it might end up fix or it might have addressed in a lot of the goals that we have looking at. Um so one of them is uh you know attracting business into town, things like that. Um some other things that we talked about, um they wanted to know a little bit more of what the intent of the brokerage firm we talked about and our um goals. Um maybe that's something that we can firm up with them. Um. Um they they also mentioned that maybe the town council might wanna be involved in ways to reuse or rehab properties, take a look at ways to um use tax tax abatements or other incentives to encourage people to update properties. That was something we talked a lot about with the um POCV when that was happening. Because um you know to make that kind of investment for um for a business owner could be in hit uh cost prohibitive, but if we offer them some sort of a sense, a consent of, um it might help them update some of the buildings. Um they wanted to be uh kept updated on the new commissions that we had proposed because again there might be some um overlap and they have a concern, as we'll find out in a minute, we have 12 openings right now on our boards and commissions and if we're adding what we saw on the list, um you know, 21 people were looking for volunteers, we were canceling what we have, so they just wanted to express that concern. Another thing that they um offered was quote unquote a fire sale on hookups for the sewer. Um a lot of company or a lot of um properties right now are being told that, you know, to be, there there's a price given to everybody, 5,000, 10,000, 15,000 to do the bummer. If we did a one-time fire sale where it's 50% off, we might get a lot more customers on that sewer, um which would end up benefiting everybody that's on um on the service. Um and they also wanted to know a little bit more about why we were looking at commissions instead of committing struggles. Um they wanted to know what the charge was for each of them, uh what kind of authority they would have and what kind of makeup they would have um for uh professionals on each of those committees. So we discussed a lot. Um and I have to say at times it was a little uncomfortable because being a liaison, it's more of a reporting back and forth. You know, I report to you, they report to me, but we were actually having discussions, so um but that's what we were charged with in this time. So I, but it got so uncomfortable, I guess at some point I wanted to go over um what our roles and responsibilities are as liaisons, so I can make sure I don't run for step. So minutes of conditions. Okay. Is that it? Is that it, Steve? I think I got everything.
Well, mine is is much, much shorter, I've only had two meetings to uh to the water commission on the 22nd. Um just to summarize a little bit from the minutes that we've just published, um there's a review of the Torrey Road's comeuppance system. Uh they're looking to investigate in the summertime the potential for service line leaks. They've been noticing some increases in usage that are untruly uncommon for this time of year. Uh overall, they saw a decrease in usage, which they said has been a lot due to the wet springs you had, but also a lot of conservation efforts that have been promoted by the state and the region. Um but at the end of the year, at least year physical date, it was 185,000 or 889,000, 334 dollars. Uh revenues, uh 70 million dollars higher than less. And it's mostly just increases to Stone Pond, um other updates from the water commission. New service application usages, uh they've been reached out by the Regent Woods and a few other properties, um they're waiting for updates from the new car wash that's being built across from the Big West, for example, Fieldstone Commons. And a few other usage parties regarding upcoming water developments. Uh the second item is Conservation Commission, which was the second for all night, 23rd. Um they want to remind everybody that there's a uh site walk on the February 1st for the Conservation Commission, um they'll be reviewing a property on that E3 Dockwell Road. And then the following Saturday is gonna be their first, hopefully full moon snowshoe event, I'm not seeing much snow right now. Hopefully we'll get at least a coating, but that should be a really great event. It's free to the public, they're only asking for contributions to help support the mission and efforts to tour all the trails in town. Um otherwise, that should be about it. Uh there was a discussion about the Donkey Mill, or Donkey Mill Mill property with the Northern Connecticut Land Trust, which is based out of Summers, so there's an argument conversation about the acquisition of that property and what avenues might be taken, so that'll be it.
Thank you.
WPCA met on uh January 21st and the representatives from Genovese Construction were there to talk about the parcel uh by Star Hill. Uh they're gonna have um storage for their heavy equipment, so the the WPCA talked about how to manage the oil that may come from the heavy equipment and how to manage the oil separators and how to protect the environment because there'll be a wash bay there as well and that site is also gonna be used for rental storage. They won't be using all of the building for their own equipment, they're gonna rent some of it out as well. And they discussed how they're gonna protect the environment from the oil coming from the heavy equipment. And then a resident was there to talk about, uh there's been an offensive smell on Overpools Road and there was a sewer hookup in 2017 that um somebody was, somebody thought that that was the the uh problem, that there was a problem with that sewer hookup. Uh the site was walked by the WPCA Chair, John Zavetian. He determined that the snow wasn't coming from that property, so that they're still trying to figure out what's going on over there. Uh but the issue has not been resolved as of uh the 21st. And then the discussion on the uh parcel on the corner of Route 74 and Shilipset Lake Road near Monius Table. A gentleman was there to discuss his proposal um about a a new building there that would house a financial services company, uh remove what's there and the discussion was um on how to handle the septic and the water supply for the for that proposal. Uh there were two backup pumps ordered for the town and then the last thing that was discussed was 95 Hartford Turnpike. And there's a uh discussion of the water and the sewer hookups, there's a proposal for 44 units to to go into that parcel and uh and the discussion was heading into the sewer house. And that was it for WPCA.
What was the gentleman, the the new building and 95 74, what were they?
Uh the proposal is to to house a financial services company.
They're talking about taking the building down?
Yes.
So.
Yeah, they covered their planning and zoning, but I was still wondering. Um they're gonna be replacing the uh bike building, life.
Oh, yeah, life fitness.
Life Fitness.
Are they going with?
No, they're on a um most of the companies right now, um so they're the um the new owner will be um removing the belt, the current building and replacing it with this financial. So um the license is expired.
Although they've got someplace else in Allen today.
Yeah, I've already heard from a lot of people that in this step, they did enjoy the core of this.
Yeah, it's a neat building.
Is that it?
That's it.
Uh well, it was easy for me, Katie, uh covered most of the stuff where uh for Berchgrove, we've already been through that, so that's easy. Uh for the Board of Education, uh it's been one of the uh co-liaisoners along with you, that uh there was a lot of discussion about the uh full budget, the superintendent submitted a budget request to the Board of Education. There was substantial discussion, a lot of issues that were brought up regarding uh regarding the the budget and the 1.8% eight, 1.87 request increase on the on the on the budget and uh that the Board of Education is really taking a look at it, really diving down into it and having several more workshops coming up where they're going to be reviewing all the expenses and anything that I missed, you can update.
I'll get you on the back end.
All right.
Okay. Um I have not had any meetings, so nothing more.
Well, all right then. Um so there was a Board of Ed budget workshop meeting on the 15th, which was the opportunity to speak to administrators and that was well attended. Um I had Eastern Highland Health District um on the 16th and there was some talk about flu. Of course, we didn't have anything about the coronavirus at that point. Um uh flu is kind of spiking highs, so if you haven't got your flu shot, you're just gonna get your flu shot, we did have to do it. And they uh talked about the mumps epidemic, was mumps or measles? Mumps, mumps epidemic at Yukon. Um um luckily that's clear in health. Uh we had a site walk with the fire departments last weekend, um uh the 22nd. As you mentioned, we had the Board of Ed meeting, they had their FOIA presentation with the roles of the boards and their budget discussion. They also formalized their request for the 1% fund transfer of last year's remaining balance of 85,113 dollars. They set the graduation date at 18/20/20 and there's an upcoming legislative breakfast that a few of the school districts are gonna be attending here in Talland on January 30th from 8:00 to 9:30. Um at the high school, if anybody wants to attend. They're actually also meeting tonight um down the program room uh as a budget workshop meeting. And that is all from me. So, 8-1, um new business, the presentation and discussion of the 2018, 2019 comprehensive annual financial report.
Uh councillors, good evening, I'd like to introduce Vanessa Recito, um who will be presenting tonight on that 2019 talent audit and CAFER, I won't be able to answer any questions afterwards, so I've been asked a whole lot.
Hi, good evening. Thank you everyone for having me. Um I know you probably got either a company or in the mail, the CAFER, the federal single audit, the state single audit and the SaaS 114 on this communication. So I have boiled all those down into this presentation, so I'm just gonna summarize everything in here. I do have everything else with me, so if you do have specific questions on the CAFER, single audits, I can go get them and and answer those questions. All right?
Take it away.
Okay. Um so as far as the agenda tonight, I'm gonna talk first about the standards we follow and the reports that were issued. Um I will do a tree top level highlight of the CAFER and the single audits. Um I'll briefly summarize the required auditor communication and then I'll end with a long list unfortunately of upcoming GASP standards and just also a reminder on um something that was in place earlier this year which didn't affect Talland, but I just wanna make sure that your um your procedures are up to date. Okay, so as far as the responsibilities of the audit, so just to delineate what management is responsible for and what the audit firm is responsible for. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with the US GAAP and also for implementing and designing internal controls to make sure that the financial statements are free and material, the statement whether due to error or fraud. whether due to error or fraud. The auditor's responsibilities are to express opinions on the financial statements and also to plan and perform the audit to provide reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free and material misstatement. So, the term reasonable assurance means that we are not looking at every transaction. In the town, we do utilize an element of materiality when we select transactions and also risk, you know, account balance risk. So, the financial statements, we apply in governmental activities, the business type activities. Each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information under auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and also government auditing standards. The federal single audit is performed under uniform guidance. And the state single audit is performed under state, single, state sections of the single. As far as the audit results for the CAFER, we have issued clean opinions on all of those opinion units I mentioned previously. The highest form of an opinion that you can receive, it basically means that all of the opinion units are correctly stated in accordance with accounting standards. And we did not find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls over financial report. And then I kind of just excerpted some financial statements from, some tables from the financial statements just to kind of provide a tree top level again of the results. So, on Slide 6 presented here is the governmental activities and the business type activities comparing 2018 to 2019. The governmental activities are basically all of the governmental funds aggregated together. And then your business type activities are your water and sewer funds. So, really, nothing really major to report. And really, either governmental activities or business type activities from 18 to 19, everything's pretty much status quo. I would say the only large change, in my opinion, is in the non-current liability section in governmental activities, your liabilities decreased, which obviously is good. So, you're paying down on your long-term debt. Your bonds decreased about $3 million. And then the liability for your other post-employment benefits or OPEB, that decreased a million and a half. So, that's really the majority of the change from 2018 to 2019. On the next page, I just excerpted the major funds of the town and just the results from last year to this year. So, the general funds fund balance takes 100, about 104,700 from last year to this year. Ending fund balance is 10.877 million. Sewer assessment had a small decrease in fund balance of $69,000. Same as CDVG, small cities, very small decrease in fund balance, $15,000. Capital Projects Fund balance decreased $3.3 million. So, that sounds like a lot, but the way the Capital Projects Fund really works is that you're working off of what you have in there. So, you do have a remaining fund balance, unfortunately, until you issue debt that's going to really, you know, replenish that fund balance. And then lastly, the fifth column, which is entitled non-major governmental funds. These are the smaller funds of the town aggregated together. So, that fund balance increased $60,000. The next page is a general fund budget to actual presentation. So, on this page, you'll see the original budget that was legally adopted by the voters. The second column is the final budget after any transfers or additional appropriations. That is compared to the actual results. And then the variance column is all the way over to the right. So, on a budgetary basis, the general funds revenues came in $705,000 greater than budget. That's made up of really property taxes that were $203,000 greater than budget. And the investment income came in $382,000 greater than budget. So, that's like the two major reasons for that. Expenditures came in about $340,000 less than budget. And the major contributor to that is administrative, $74,000. Public safety was under budget by $145,000. And then Board of Education was under budget by $85,000.
Can I interrupt one minute?
Yeah, sure.
Just also, part of your package back in November was a memorandum from me that gives you a lot more detail regarding this particular amount. And it gives you a little more detail of the revenues and expenditures on the budgetary basis. So, it explains it a little more in depth. So, if you have certain questions, you maybe would refer to that as well as this. Sorry, Vanessa.
No, you're... So, in total, on a budgetary basis, you were $285,000. Expenditures were greater than revenues. However, you did account for an appropriation of fund balance. So, in your final budget, you thought you were going to need $1.6 million to balance the budget, but you only needed the $285,000. So, that's a very good difference on this two. And then some other that I thought you might be interested in. Property tax collections for the current grant lists were 98.8% compared to 99.06% last year. So, a small decrease, but still very respectable amount. And then your net OPEB liability is two, about $2.2 million. And your OPEB plan is about $37. And moving on to the single audits. So, the town receives both federal and state grants. So, we're required to perform a federal and a state single audit where we, you know, look at all the grants that the town has received. And based upon the laws and regulations of the feds and the state, we're required to test certain programs according to, you know, how they outline, how we select the programs. So, for the federal single audit, you expended $785,000 of federal awards. We tested at the Board of Education, a special education cluster, and we issued an unmodified or clean opinion on compliance. And we did not find any material weaknesses on the major program. For the state single audit, you spent a little over $12 million, $12,55,000. We tested three programs, Town A Road, steep for the Tallinn Public Works Garage Expansion, and then the Losip Program. And similarly, we issued a clean opinion on compliance and did not identify any material weaknesses on the major program. So, moving into the required auditors communication. Your significant accounting policies are described in Note 1 of the CAFER. So, I actually think that's a very interesting note to read. It says a lot about the various account balances and how you recognize revenue. No new standards, no new GAZI standards were required as we adopted this year. So, we did not adopt any. The town's financial statements, just like every financial statement, includes significant estimates. So, we're required to report those to you. Management estimates the useful lives on capital assets and that's used to calculate the depreciation expense. Management also estimates the allowance for uncollectible receivables based upon historical information and what the collection has been in previous years. And then management utilizes an actuary to calculate the net OPEB liability. So, we did not encounter any difficulties in performing the audit. We didn't have any disagreements with management. Management did not consult with another accountant for a second opinion. There were no uncorrected misstatements and there were no independence issues. So, we're independent of the town. And then lastly, these are the new upcoming GAZI standards for the next three years. So, we're up to Statement 91. Next year, for fiscal year 630, 2020, we have Statement 84, which is a new definition of fiduciary activities. So, we'll be looking at your agency funds and some of your other funds just to make sure they're in the right columns. So, the financial statement, schedules might look a little bit different. Statement 90 is not going to apply to you because you do not own a majority equity interest in another company. In fiscal year 2021, there's another two standards that might impact the town. So, Statement 87 has to do with leases, basically saying that any operating leases that the town has, so anything that the town is paying rent for or is receiving rental income for, rather than just expensing it or earning the revenue, the town is going to have to record an asset and a liability for that operation. So, in shortly, and maybe within the next couple of months, we're going to meet with all of our clients to discuss Statement 84 fiduciary activities and the lease standard. We want to get a head start on the lease standard, just in case there are a lot of operating leases. We kind of just want to get ahead of it. And then Statement 89 is basically saying you cannot capitalize interest on debt on deconstruction before the end of the construction period. So, they're not allowing that anymore. And then the last statement that is applicable is in fiscal year 2022. It's not going to have any impact to the town right now because you do not have any conduit debt obligations. I don't anticipate that either. And then my last thing is, has to do with the federal single audit, uniform guidance. And I know that the town does not receive a lot of federal monies, federal grant monies. But I just wanted to make sure that all your procurement standards are up to date. Your procurement policies are those for both the Board of Education and the town. So, if you, if you receive a federal grant where you have procurement, this new uniform guidance procurement language has to be in your purchasing policy. So, we did not test this, this year because we did not have to, but we could in upcoming years. So, I'm just reminding all my clients that if you didn't look at it, we just want to make sure that you're compliant with it. And then my contact information is on the last. And I'll get any questions.
Yeah. So, I actually, Lisa, the first question I had is that change that they're making in 2021, capitalizing interest for putting in the construction period, is that going to affect us from our investment perspective?
No. What they're talking about is really the construction, like for example, the Birch Grove project. There's a whole process of interest expense on notes and debt.
Right.
So, you know, it should not...
So, if we issue a bond and we have money in the bank, kind of a thing, we haven't employed it yet, we can't capitalize on any kind of interest. Is that what I'm, is that what this is saying?
Right, you can't cap, so in addition to capitalizing the cost of the school, you cannot capitalize the interest on the debt.
Correct, yeah. Okay. So, you don't think that's going to be that big of an impact? Okay. And actually, I didn't have a, I can get back to it. In the actual audit, on page 11, it mentioned a decrease in State of Connecticut Teachers Retirement Pensions. I wasn't sure I was following the thread on that. Is this money that we're sending to the state for a portion of the pensions? Or is this...
See how we have payments, Vanessa.
Okay, so, so what happened? So, the State of Connecticut, the teachers contribute to their plan and the State of Connecticut contributes to their plan. There's a strange accounting rule that says that the municipalities have to record revenue and expense for the amount that the state contributes. So, it has no effect on your bottom line. It's just we have to gross up revenues and expenditures. So, the strange thing that happened, so there, there's two pieces to it. There's the state pension plan and then there's the state OPEB plan. And so, there was a strange entry this year because all of the, a lot of the assumptions, assumptions in the teachers' OPEB plan changed. So, it actually turned into a revenue. So, rather than increasing revenues and expenditures like we did for the pension piece, we had to decrease revenues and expenditures for the OPEB piece. So, when you look at the comparison year to year, it's a lot lower this year. We have to decrease them.
Okay. All right, that's what I wasn't following. So, I didn't think we actually continued. I know the state was looking at doing that, but they...
It's an accounting entry that has to be...
And then I had a question on, in the, this is the federal single audit. You're looking at the, at all of the grant dollars that are coming in. And Lisa, I don't know if this one might even work here also, but the grant dollars that were listed on the sheets here didn't tie to what we had in the budgets for like some of them. So, for instance, like the...
These are not the revenue numbers?
No.
First of all, in this report, in your single audit reports, you have to report on what was expected. So, these would be the actual expenditures for those particular grants.
Oh, okay. So, if I look at the IDEA grant, for instance, the IDEA, we had in budget $458,075 and it came in at the $454. So, this is the actual expenditures, not the, okay. You know, at the top of the page says that. That one, you know? Sorry about that. And I think I had, I said Lisa about a million questions. I have to fire something apparently.
For that net OPEB liability percentage funding, is that a range? Is that, is there a range for ideal funding percentages? Or is that just, you know, a pretty marker for us?
You know, they have a range for the pension. I have not heard of a lot of them for OPEB. I think it is basically whatever you can do. Anything over zero is good. I think it's maybe a good conversation to have with your actuary. But, you know, most municipalities are focusing, and you're lucky you don't have a defined benefit pension plan like the majority of many municipalities. So, everybody's concentrating on funding that first and then the OPEB. So, I think it's a great conversation with your actuary.
So, we'll talk about that one too. Thank you very much.
Is there anything else? My contact information is here or at least...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vanessa, thanks.
And thank you, Lisa, for all that you do and all the questions you answered for us.
Okay. We are going to move on to Point 2. Consideration of a resolution to authorize the submission of an application for the Connecticut State Opioid Response Initiative, mini-grant of the amount of $5,000. Grant applications are due January 5th.
So, thank you, Melon Chair. I wanted to invite Nancy Dunn, who's our Assistant Director of Human Services. Let me sort of, a little bit more, just to sort of set the stage. This is the first time Tallinn is applying for this grant. It's being put on through Amplify, which is our regional mental health action organization. And Nancy will give you a little more back on however I can help with it. Thank you.
This is only the second time that this grant has been offered. It is competitive and we have to use all of the funding by June 30th. So, it's a, it's a very quick turnaround grant. It's basically meant for, it comes, hold on. It basically comes from the Connecticut State Opioid Response Initiative. That's the State Opioid Response Disorder Grant. We distribute, advertise, and host programs that, that spread the message about opioid use disorder that is supposed to be customized to what our community needs and is ready for. So, that's why it's, it's competitive to each one. There will be 10, a maximum of 10 grants awarded. And the total, the total award cannot exceed $5,000. So we looked at, they give us like six different deliverables. We have to do four of them. And they all focus on, on getting information out, whether it's advertising, disseminating information through, like through the schools, through the library, through different groups, through businesses, um, and hosting programs. So, um, I've talked to the LPC and we've come up with a couple of ideas that we're considering, um, and that's, that's the type of, and the grant what is submitted is kind of general. We don't know exactly who will, you know, who will we have speaking of, you know, the dates or anything.
You don't have to submit what we're going to do as part of the grant?
Not specifically. It's, it's kind of, it's, it's not like the building committee. Um, we say that, you know, we are going to host a program, um, you know, aimed at a, you know, adolescents and parents or seniors or whatever. Um, and they leave it to us to say, okay, you know, you've done this. You know, you're saying you're doing this and we're back. This is exactly what we did do. So it's, our grants are a little bit different than, than some of the, ours is a process.
Okay, and for the part that says we customize for community needs, how are we going to decide, um, if the community needs? Or I know that we haven't had like the ERAE survey or anything like that. So we're going to use as like a factor.
We can, we can look at a variety of things, Lisa. One of them is, um, we can look at what, what the general needs are. Um, people are very concerned about the fact that, um, in, in previous surveys, some of the kids are getting their meds from parents or grandparents. Well, there are lock boxes, medical lock boxes that you can have. And that's a very important thing to get out to seniors because they're not, they're not used to having people go through their cabinets or stealing drugs. Um, and it's something that they may not be aware that, that that's an issue that they have to be aware of. Um, so, so that's a need that every community has found. What we have seen in Tolland is we've seen, um, drug abuse that affects the, um, those kids that are maybe out of high school, but they're still young adults. Um, and that's, that's a group that's hard to capture because we don't capture, catch them in the schools. We don't catch them, a lot of them through the churches, um, through places where they, you know, where large, where families congregate, um, because they're sort of out there doing their own thing. And I know the colleges are having, you know, a terrible time addressing this issue also. So that's part of trying to get that information out to that age group.
Is there, is there a, Nancy, thank you. Is there a way that, um, social media can be incorporated into this? Cause I know Instagram is big and, and, and I don't, I'm not so sure about Facebook for, for the younger class.
That's a, that's a, that's a big portion of where we're looking. As a matter of fact, I was kind of interested to, to hear what Zach was doing for, um, economic development.
Neighborhood synergies, you know, looking at the synergies.
Yep, I just heard right off. Yeah, yeah. I think that's, that's very important. And I think, um, there, there were a lot of really good messages out there that, that we need to get out, um, just for people, even for people to see. Um, doctors' offices, especially when, when you look at the, the opioids that are prescribed and people are always thinking, adults are thinking, it's not going to affect me. I'm not going to get hooked on this stuff. Um, and they don't realize how easy it is. And so to make sure that the doctors have, you know, whether it's, um, flyers or, you know, having a, a larger discussion with the problems that, that can be, that can be faced. You know, with long-term use of opioids, um, and some of it for chronic pain, um, so they have to.
And the thing you mentioned about the seniors, I think is critical because they, a lot of them don't know that they can take part of their medicine, leave the rest of it in their cabinet. And younger kids know, they know where to look and they know what it is when they see it.
Right.
So the awareness for them is crucial, in my opinion.
Yeah. And a lot of the seniors will get those big packs of pills.
That will trend.
Right out there.
And I think there's been some legislation that is, is trying to restrict the prescribing. And I think there's been some edutainment made with that.
Yep.
So we're headed in the right direction. And then there's also, um, naloxone or Narcan is the, is the.
That's, that's one of the deliverables that we have, that we've identified that we have to have. And one of the good things about it is that now people don't have to be afraid because naloxone is no longer just an injection. You can do the Narcan nasal, right? And you're not going to hurt anyone if they haven't had an opioid overdose. It, it doesn't affect them if not. So I think that's going to make it critical because one of, one of the aspects of this, um, is to work with community leaders, just you, uh, to include opioid overdose prevention and safe storage in town plans. I'm, I'm not sure exactly what town plans mean, whether it's the town building or not. And that's something I have to clarify with them. Um, but if it's something that, you know, you determine can be safely, especially in the nasal, um, formula, if that's something that is safe to have in town halls, is it safe to have in, like, in our businesses? Um, and, and one of the aspects that we want to look at is what are our businesses doing? Um, because Big Y, somebody could have, you know, an episode in Big Y, could have an overdose there. How are they prepared, you know, to handle that? So that, that's part of what we need to do.
Yeah, some businesses, um, not here, but some businesses have, they call them, I think they call them nalox boxes. It's almost like they're, they're available and it's almost like a firearm.
Yes.
You have to break something to get access to it. Uh, and, and those things are, are available. I don't know if you would put one in, in a place like Big Y, but, you know, potentially have an overdose at Big Y.
Absolutely, yeah.
So some, you know, some way to treat that should, it would probably be a good idea to have something like that down.
Any questions? Can you move? Well, Nancy, as always, thank you.
Okay.
So because of the deadlines, we're a couple of days away. And, uh, considering the resolution, can you authorize me to, uh, apply to this grant?
I'm checking your motions to authorize a resolution, the submission of an application for the Connecticut State Opioid Response Initiative for SOR mini-grant of the amount of $5,000.
Okay. And in discussion, all those, Paul and Raver? Indian post, any staying? Motion passes. All right, eight point three. Discussion with Trooper Eklund on the responsibilities of the Resident Troopers to the towns.
I just want to recognize that along with Trooper Eklund, we have Lieutenant Palmer from Troop C here today as well. So if we do this, it seems like.
Look, and then? And as I mentioned earlier, I talked to Trooper Eklund and he said any questions that you have, real quick presentations, feel free to engage.
Yep.
So we'd rather carry it. Kind of like your, yeah. Well, first of all, I just want to thank, um, Mike Groves and Bruce fighting me to the meeting as well as the town council. I know there's some new members on the council, so let me just really quickly introduce myself. I'm Kevin Eklund. I'm the admin resident trooper here in town. Uh, I've been in town for about three and a half years. Uh, prior to that, um, I was at Troop C for a short stint. I was at our emergency services unit for about eight years of SOAR training in Canines. Uh, if I go back a little bit further, I did my first rotation down at Troop K in Colchester for a few years. I've been on 22 years. I'm a grad at Northeastern University. If I don't pronounce my Rs, that's because I'm from Boston, so forgive me for that. Um, and I also was a security director for Western Hotels for a bunch of years before I came on the show in 1998. So, and again, like Mike said, I'm a lieutenant barracks commander. Uh, Palmer is here with me tonight. So again, if anybody has any questions regarding Troop C, the relationship that we have with Troop C, which is vitally important, the lieutenant's here to answer those questions. So I know I'm short on time, so I'm going to try to get through this as quick as I can.
You are not short on time. You are not short on time.
All right, so the first things I just want to discuss with the town council, um, to talk is to be discussed is our community policing initiatives. As I think some of the town council members remember, uh, there was really not a whole bunch of community policing initiatives when I first got here. There were a couple, but we wanted to make that a focal point, get ourselves back into the community, involved with the community. Um, so that results into some of the community policing events that we do attend and we'll go through those as the presentation goes on. I want to talk a little bit about Tolland Schools and how important of a role our office plays, uh, along with the School Resource Officer Program, which just commenced all three years ago, just when I first got in the office. We'll talk a little bit about omnipresence, visibility, how important that is to our community that we're out there. You guys have seen us. Speed enforcement initiatives, statistics, some of the current criminal trends, the additional state police services that are offered because you do have the resident trooper program. Uh, you'll, we'll go through that a little bit and then just kind of looking forward to 2020 beyond. So again, I'm your administrative resident state trooper. Uh, we have three other troopers in the office. Uh, Trooper First Class Jonathan Nahagan, Trooper Kevin Hoyt, and Trooper Matthew Burzak, who actually just came into our office because we had one of our troopers recently retire. So he's brand new. And our administrative secretary, Lori Sherwood. She's the brains of the office. So our community policing initiatives. So one of the big ones we started last year in December was active aggressor training. So myself and Rick Owning, who is a member of our ESU team, he's a bomb dog handler as well as a bomb expert. He's on the tactical unit. He came out and we hosted our first town-wide active aggressor training for any interested businesses in our community. We began here at the town hall. We got all staff members together, all department heads together. And we basically gave them kind of a, just a real quick run through of stuff that they can do should an active aggressive situation take place. So Channel 30 came out. We were down in the library, um, conference room or the, their conference room there. And we conducted that class to any businesses that wished to attend. So we put out an email blast. We get a bunch of businesses that came in. We gave them that presentation. And then we offered them risk assessments as well. And some of those risk assessments are scheduled for next month. I'll be going into some of the local businesses and offering them some, um, idea of what they can do. Again, should active aggressive situations take place in maybe some areas where there's some safe havens inside the businesses and exit routes, et cetera. One of the other community policing initiatives we began last year is we started as child safety seat installation. Trooper Hoyt is currently a certified child safety seat expert. Over this past year, he's installed dozens of child safety seats, conducted two safety seat checkpoints. So just another way to be able to reach out to the community, spend some time with folks. We've had a, a pretty good response with this. Another big one is our citizen, our senior citizen outreach program. Uh, that's Trooper Nahagan. He conducts, um, information sessions with our seniors quarterly. So he'll go to the senior center or any other, um, senior housing in the town and basically just kind of keeps them updated on scams, phone scams, financial scams and things that are targeting our seniors, which is a very, very big thing happening right now. So we want to give our seniors as much information as possible, how to counter attack those, uh, those scams. And then the Facebook page. We were 50-50 on whether we should start a Facebook page in the town, but I have to say it's paid off big time. We're providing information to the community, um, sending out updates when we do things, you know, community policing programs. And probably the biggest thing is information about different crimes that are happening around town, et cetera, and seeking information and help from the public. So as of recent, yesterday, we had an incident that took place in the town where one of the cameras was able to ID a person, um, trying to attempt to break into a home, taking some packages that were delivered. And through that, I was able to put that out on Facebook and post that. And with one hour, within one hour, we had a suspect. The suspect's already been interviewed. He's confessed and we expect an arrest tomorrow. So it's been a huge, huge tool for us. And we're over a thousand plus likes and it just keeps building and building. So it's actually worked out pretty good for us. So some of the community policing events that we've attended and we continue to attend these, we attended them last year. We do our annual toy drive and tree lighting. Uh, this year I think we raised over $1,400 in cash and checks and gift cards. I think we had three truckloads of toys that went to the fire department. All those toys will eventually get distributed to the kids in Tolland that need it. And then outside of this, outside of Tolland, they'll go to other towns after that. So it was a huge drive. We have some, um, some high school kids here. That works. So those two kids right there, those are mine? All right, so they needed some community policing, I mean, I'm sorry, community service hours. So guess what? You can work the toy drive and you can frozen solid and, you know, help us out.
It was cold.
Yeah. So for the first time, we attended the athletic fundraiser event at Tolland High School. Uh, the athletic director called and said, hey, would you be interested in coming down and helping us out with this fundraiser? It was a fundraiser basically for obviously some sport programs and other club programs in the town. And it was a huge success. The kids loved it. We had a great time doing that. This year up at the high school, I attended and worked the Boy Scout Bike Safety Day. And it was children from towns, surrounding towns that came in and participated in the event. It was basically all about obviously bike safety. They were issued free helmets, et cetera. And that was something we participated in as well. Another event we attended is called Career Day. That's at the Tolland Middle School. So basically there's parents in there from all different walks of our businesses, you know, emergency personnel, construction workers, and you come in and do a whole Career Day. Our school resource officer is very involved in this and we will be involved with this, uh, this coming year as well. Side of Middle Road Race. We participate in this as well. We lead the race. We have a trooper up front, one of the resident troopers, and lights and sirens and he begins the race and we assist him with road closures, et cetera. Coffee with cops. What is better than coffee with cops?
Don't do coffee.
Don't. So Coffee with Cops, this was a, um, an event put on by the school superintendent who called me up and asked me, would we attend some meetings with, um, parents from all of the schools? I said absolutely not a problem. So we went in with our school resource officer. We were able to meet parents that have children in the school system, be able to talk with them and answer any questions they should have about, uh, situations and incidents at school. This past year, we conducted a drug recognition class. Uh, Trooper Jonathan Nahagan, he's a drug recognition expert. And he conducted a workshop for the Tolland administrators and the school support staff. So John, uh, Trooper Nahagan, he being a drug recognition expert, he can look at people, he can look at your eyes, he can look at your mood, the way you're, you're presenting yourself. And he can kind of tell you pretty much for the most part what kind of narcotic you're on or if you're on narcotics or not, et cetera. So he was able to go in, conduct a class for our administrators just to kind of give them ideas of what to look for should, uh, somebody in one of the schools obviously, um, be on some kind of substance. Memorial Day Parade, another big event that we attend every year. Again, we lead the parade. We have a cruiser right out front, takes off, leads the parade. Several of the parades, we've actually marched in it. We've had canines in it. We've had dogs in it, uh, personnel in it. And then obviously we provide any, the road closures and protection for the parade. Neighborhood outreach. So we had one particular incident in the neighborhood. Um, and I was called and asked, hey, we have a problem with this individual in our neighborhood. How can you help us? And I'm not going to get too much into the weeds of the issues and problems. But it was significant enough that I said, you know what? Uh, there's definitely a problem. I hear you. So why don't we all meet together and see if we can't resolve that problem? So he was one main contact. He was on a group text with several neighbors. And we all met down in the library conference room. I introduced myself to about fifteen to twenty neighbors. And we talked and discussed the problems that they were having and we resolved the problems that they were having. We answered, I answered all the questions that they had. It was just a nice way to get out and speak to some of the community, some of my neighbors. So that was one, I did this. So we had an open house. I think it's probably the first open house that the resident trooper's office has ever had, uh, back in June 4th. Uh, we had a little open house from three to six PM. It was another thing that we put out over social media, uh, over the town website, et cetera, inviting anybody in the community that wanted to come in to meet us, discuss with us, anything they had, any concerns, whatever they had. Uh, and we got a pretty good turnout. So it was good. We'll probably. So it was good, we'll probably end up doing that again in the spring sometime too. So the register of voters here in town contacted me and said, hey, would you mind doing a presentation for all the Tallinn County Register of Voters? And I said absolutely. So we set up a meeting point down in the library again, and it was probably thirty, forty Tallinn registrars. And we met, we talked about safety issues, they had questions to ask me about, you know, did somebody bring a gun into the polling place? Some of the other statutes revolving, you know, revolving stuff around voter issues and problems. So I did that this past year as well. Spring Fling Event is at the Tallinn Intermediate School. We do this every year. It's just a nice way again to get back into the community, see the kids, have some fun. Hand out a lot of the little trinkets and things that we have, and the kids seem to love that, so we have a pretty good time there. Tip a cop, that's a fundraiser for the Special Olympics. Again, it's something we do annually, we'll continue to do annually. It's a great, great event, raises some good money for Special Olympics, and we participate that. That's obviously Duncan Bones here in Tallinn. Truck Day, another event we do every year. This is done right outside the library, actually right outside the Town Hall here. Again, another fun event to meet people, meet the community, meet the kids, they come out. They get to take a look at all the trucks, buses, fire trucks. As you can see, we set up a little table, and again, we hand out some things for the kids as well. Tallinn Schools. So School Resource Officer, so again, this program started about three years ago. The superintendent was really wanting to have a school resource officer inside the school. At the time, the town wasn't really willing to put anything forward to put that resource officer in there. So there had to be some kind of an agreement made. So there was an agreement made between the Board of Ed and the town in order to get the school resource officer hired. Because the town and the town manager actually has to do the hiring. Because the school and the superintendent cannot hire a police officer for a school. They can hire a security guard, or an armed security guard, but you can't hire a police officer. So what was really nice is our department, along with the town, along with the school, all kind of combined together, came up with a, a memorandum of understanding, lawyers got involved, and the school was able to get the school resource officer in. So that school resource, school resource officer is Brian Sockell, he's a retired Hartford cop. He does a phenomenal job, the kids love him. It's just an absolutely fantastic program. He's part-time right now, I'm really hoping that we can get him full-time at some point. I think he's just a huge resource for us, and he's great with the kids. So it's just a fantastic program. So he answers to me, he falls under our trooper contract, resident trooper contract. So he answers to me with law enforcement side of it, the report writing side of it. And he also shares, I also share some of that supervision with the superintendent. So the superintendent may schedule where he goes, what school he's in, which day. But anything law enforcement related, or report writing related, he answers to me and to our office. School District Safety Meetings, so we're very entrenched in the schools. I meet quarterly with all the admin people, the superintendent. We talk about all the safety plans and everything about all of the schools in the town. I attend all those meetings, I also attend pretty much all of the drills, lockdown drills, et cetera, that happen at the schools. So we are very, very entrenched in our schools. School safety for us is priority number one. So the Birch Grove Reconstruction, as we all know what is going on. I've been very involved in temporary school projects. When they first put those up, they included me in a lot of the meetings. On how that was going to work, how the safety plans were going to work, et cetera. So we worked in conjunction with the superintendent and other board members to ensure that. It'll be the same thing with the new school, which is all obviously over to the right. I have been involved in some of the planning with the new school. When they talked about earlier about the color coding on the hallways. That was, you know, plans from us, thinking tactically, if we had to come into a school, what would be the easiest way to maneuver around a school? And that would be color coded. So we're very involved in that whole process with the Birch Grove School. So omnipresence. Tallinn Resident State Troopers will remain visible, vigilant, on routine patrol. We have put up strategic areas around the town so that we have the maximum visibility to the public. So I put that picture in there so you can see, I know you've probably seen us around town, we put what they call cruise lights on. It's a little bit more of a visibility thing for us. And then we sit up and, you know, you'll see us up in the green, down on 195, some of the strategic points where we're having the most volume of traffic. That way people will see us and know that we're out there. Speed enforcement initiative. So this was pretty, this was a hot topic, and it still is, and it probably always will be. We understand that we have, you know, speeders in town. And we're making, I think, some good, good headway on curbing that. So back in 2019, we purchased these two digital signs. You've probably seen them up around town. What these signs do, they do a couple of different things. They collect data, so we're able to collect data, and we're going to go over that for after a minute. But what it really does is obviously help us slow vehicles down. And these are extremely mobile, we can pull these right off a speed limit sign, move it to the next street, move it to the next street. It's not like the big old trailers where we had to hook it up and tow it around. These are just much easier for us to move around. So they work great. So with that said, we do get these reports, summer reports. So what it tells us is that sign was up from October 22nd through October 31st. It gives us the speed limit of that, of that road, which is Old Post. So that one particular section of Old Post is 30 miles per hour posted. The average speed of the vehicles that came through was 31.88. And then you can see how it breaks it down. We did have somebody that decided to drive 75 on that road, so, you know, that's obviously a problem. Then it gives you the average volume per day, so we have 1,117 cars go down Old Post per day. With a total volume of 11,178 cars went down Old Post between the 22nd and the 31st.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of cars.
Yeah, and that's a cut through, Old Post is a cut through, so it should be a heavy volume on the cut-throughs like Burbank, Peter Green, those are all cut-throughs. We try to target as much as we can. So what's nice now, this data gives us times and locate, our times and volume. So the, this chart, the pie chart, what it is, is that light blue section, that's vehicles that have been slowed by that sign. So that's telling us that those signs are working. Alright, because overwhelmingly, people are saying, oop, there's a sign, and they either let off the gas or put on the brake. Because I think what we do every day, we drive from point A to point B, you're driving to work, and you probably don't even see the speed limit signs anymore. You're just kind of in that routine, you just keep driving. You don't realize it's 30 until you hit that sign, and you look down and you're doing 50, and people letting off the gas. So on that chart, the chart to the left with the red, yellow, and, oh, the red, orange, green. It's nice because it gives us a time between 1,400 hours and 1,800 hours, which is 2:00 in 6:00 PM. That tells us that's where the most volume of traffic is, and the violators. So now I can look at that and say, okay, to the guys, and when we do our speed enforcement, we need to be on Old Post in that section between those hours. And start writing tickets. And that's what we're doing. So these signs have been really, really helpful to us. We're also going to be putting some eventually up on the green too as well. I think more permanent ones to try to slow the traffic down too. So in 2019, we made, and I just wonder, before I go through the slide. When the Tallinn Resident Troopers, there's four of us working, we don't work on the highway. Okay, we are not up on the highway stopping cars. We only go on the highway if we need to help out our brothers or sisters with something that's going on significant on the highway. So the statistics here with motor vehicle stops is just within the side of town in Tallinn, excludes the highway. So our four resident troopers of 2019, we stopped 851 cars. We rolled 639 tickets, and we issued 212 warnings. So that's what we did in 2019. That's an average of 70 to 71 car stops a month. And that's not on the highway. Some statistics, this is Troop C statistics. And so a lot of people question, and I know it's the non-reportable matters. The non-reportable matters, the majority of those non-reportable matters are patrol checks. And it's trooper-initiated patrol checks. So if I'm driving down Old Pulse Road, I can, on my MDT, I can click Patrol Check, and it marks me doing a patrol check on Old Pulse Road. So we have residential patrol checks, commercial patrol checks, town property patrol checks, you name it. So a large portion of the non-reportables are patrol checks. And then there's a few others mixed in. But that just gives you kind of an idea of what Troop C is doing. Accidents 267, this, this will obviously include the highway, the interstate. And you can see the numbers as they go down. So now I'd like to show you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ken, so that's Troop C, what they're doing for Tallinn?
That's, I'm sorry.
Not Troop C for everything, that's just what, what they're doing when you're not here for Tallinn.
That's correct, this is Troop C.
Including the highway.
Including the highway, Tallinn only, correct. That's, there's not, there's a statistic missing from there, I think it's calls for service for Troop C is over 16,000. I think in 2019, calls for service for Tallinn. This is the Resident Trooper stats, this is our staff, our office for 2019. Just our guys, calls for service for the four resident troopers were 3,068. The non-reportables, which are officer or trooper initiated activity, 1,0986. We investigated 104 accidents, we had 6 DUI arrests, and then you can see the motor vehicle stops, 851 that I just went through. Case investigations, those would be criminal investigations that we investigated, and those are 117. And unfortunately, we had one more, one fatal motor vehicle accident. So there's a video we can play, the next slide, I think you got. I don't know if I can do that with this thing. So criminal trends. If you have a mouse, I don't know if I can.
You should be there in control of that.
You can go back, there you go. If there's, if there's a mouse. Here it goes, okay. Alright, so criminal trends. So we understand, we all understand we're having a massive problem with car breaks. Those car breaks are not just Tallinn, those are statewide. So this is just a quick video back in 2018 of what these juveniles, individuals are doing. This came from a house, I think in which street. But you can see how they jump out of the car. Kind of hard to see, but you can see them a little bit there. They go up to the cars, they're very quick. They're checking for unlocked doors, those people did a nice job, because all their vehicles were secure. And within seconds, they're going to head back to their vehicle. They're all going to jump in, and they're going to move to the next house. And off they go. And those cars were locked, so those cars were not touched. So it is an ongoing problem, like I said, it is statewide, it's every community. It's every community that has full-time police departments, it's Vernon, it's Manchester, you name it, it's happening everywhere. I reach out and I talk to chiefs of police from every community in the area, and they are having the same problem. We see that it's typically juveniles, so it's kids that are under 18 years old. I think we've got them as young as 12, that are in these vehicles. They're coming in from other communities, we find obviously a lot are coming from Hartford and some other places, they come up in groups. And they're just popping doors, trying to get anything they can out of the vehicles as quickly as possible and keep moving on. If you leave your keys in your car, your car is going bye-bye, it is going to go. Because that's what they're looking forward to. If you leave other valuables in there, they're going to take that stuff too. We have made an attempt to push this out over media outlets constantly, to try to remind people to secure your vehicles, lock your doors. I know we'd all like to be able to live in that community where we don't have to do that, but that's just not reality anymore. So with the juveniles, it makes it very difficult for us, because over the years juvenile laws have changed. The juvenile court system has changed. Juvenile court system now looks at this as a minor property crime, we are not going to put this kid in detention, it's never going to happen. It takes three times before they even see a judge. So they'll go to juvie court, they'll see a probation officer, they'll say, don't do anything for 10 days. Goes out, steals a car, comes back, he'll see the same probation officer, don't do that for 20 days. He'll come back, see the, perhaps see the judge the next time around. When I first got on the job, we're classmates, when we first got on the job, the adult age was 16. They moved it to 18, which, you know, I'm not saying that's wrong, but that's changed things a lot. So they moved the adult age to 18. Anybody under 18 is a juvenile. Okay? If they're 16 and under, we can't even talk to them. Unless there's a parent or a guardian present. So I have had these kids, and I have had discussions, well now if they're 17, they can sign a release and say, yep, I'll talk to you, I don't need a parent. But 16 and under, can't even talk to them. So 17, I've talked to 17-year-olds, and they've told me right to my face, trooper, there's nothing you can do. And you know what? I'll be back in your community tomorrow night. So that's what's going, that's what we're, that's what we're dealing with. So it's very, it's as frustrating for us as it is frustrating for you guys, for everyone, it really is. We would like nothing more than to, you know, take care of business the way we think it should be done. However, with that said, just recently in December, we made a couple of arrests on juveniles. They entered a bunch of unsecured vehicles, they stole a golf cart. Thanks to the residents who made the call, troopers responded quickly, and we were able to apprehend both of them. Now that was a very unusual case because they were Tallinn residents. And we don't see that too often, most of these kids are from Hartford or someplace else coming up here, because we're easy pickings, right off the highway. And then they take their stuff and they're gone. And believe me when I tell you, I've looked at it every way, I have mapped out in my office with pins all over it. Trying to figure out, is there some kind of strategy as to where these kids are going to hit next, where are they going to go next? And there's none, they're all over the place. You would think they'd come right off the highway, hit every house right off the highway, jump back on. We have neighborhoods way deep in the Tallinn that are getting hit. So there is no, there's no strategy behind it.
Kevin, I have a quick question here, as a property owner, if I were to encounter someone, find you that video, and I wanted to detain that individual. What are the liabilities on me as a property owner to do that?
Well, first and foremost, I wouldn't recommend it. Because these are kids that are street kids. They're not kids typically, you know what I mean, so they could very well be carrying weapons. And so I think you may, there may be an issue with it. So first and foremost, for your own safety, I wouldn't recommend it. Pick the phone up, call 911, we'll get there as quick as we can. Especially if there's multiple subjects, you may only see one person, but there could be four of them. Yeah, they, they come up in packs, it's not one or two kids, it's usually three, four, or five kids, they're coming up in a stolen car already.
But if I had the means to detain, could I detain?
Kevin, you want me to jump in this?
Yeah.
You see the turn. I deal with these guys a lot, thank you so much, and I'm going to jump in and add behind your presentation. As a proster, I deal with this all the time. I wouldn't suggest it. For the exact same reason that they're saying, because what you're doing now is that it's beyond the issue of you protecting your property. It's you where you, you know, you're now putting yourself in a situation where, as Kevin said, you don't know who's out there. And that if there's one that you see, there's three others that you don't. And that's a, that's a tradition, that's a normal thing where I've had cases where people have been victimized because they go out to confront somebody. And then, next thing you know, one of the kids is coming behind them and knocking them out, going into the house and ransacking the house. So that's something that really, unless they're in your house or coming up to your house. That's something where, again, get the information, take a picture if you can, get that, get that information now. And just sort of build on something that you mentioned about, so that everyone understands also, beyond the juveniles being, that, appearing before the judge time and time and time again. That the judge, in order for them to even consider sending somebody to detention for a period of, the most we could do it now is two weeks at a time. The judge has to make a finding that it's in the juvenile's best interest to go to juvenile detention. And, you know, take that into consideration.
So we can't do it anyways.
That's the way that the law was changed.
We can't fight back, we can't.
That's, unfortunately, that's where the law was changed. You may have an issue with that, take it up with your legislators. I mean, that's, we've, we've been trying to fight that as a division for a while, but, you know, we're not the ones that make the laws, we can only do the laws what we have. I mean, trust me. Anyway, I'm sorry. That's okay, that's cool. Trust me when I tell you, it's as frustrating for us as it is, there's nothing worse than knowing that they're getting away with this. And we, we even have policies within our own agency that are tying our hands right now. We have policies within our own agency that we didn't. We have policies within our own agency that we didn't write or create, but other people did, that are tying our hands right now.
And they're taunting you with it.
It's making, yes, and it's making, and they know that.
Yeah.
These kids know that, they're not stupid. So it's very frustrating, but trust me when I tell you, the personnel at Troop C, our office is doing everything we can to grab these kids whenever we can. We're making a concerted effort for that. So just one other one. On October sixth, about three o'clock in the morning, and Lieutenant May know a little more about this, but Troop C along with Bloomfield PD, we were able to apprehend four juveniles in possession of a stolen or a vehicle from the town of Bloomfield. So, again, working with our partners locally, we're doing everything we can to try to apprehend these kids or apprehend these individuals. The bottom line is, I don't know how else to say it, you have to lock your vehicles. You have to lock your houses. We, we live in a day and age now that that is all gone.
Garages.
We don't, lock your garages, right? There was a case down at Bridgeport, where a guy was able to get into a vehicle, open up the vehicle, hit the garage door open, and went into that, into the house. Buried the rest of the house. You know, when I went to college, I was, in my classes, it was always policing is more than cops in uniforms, it's a community effort. Policing is more than us driving around in cars, which I know it's a big part, and I know us being in uniform is a big part, but it's also a community effort. We need your help. We can't do our jobs unless you help us. It just doesn't work that way. We need the community to help. And a prime example, again, not to reiterate too much, but we had a perfect example where the Facebook page went out. Within one hour, people called our office. I had multiple calls on this individual. We know who it is. Within one hour, we had that suspect, we interviewed him, he confessed, and we'll have an arrest warrant tomorrow. That's the way, it has to work sometimes, that's just the way it is. Trying to move along here, additional state police services. So I know some new town council members, I just wanna let you know, because you have the resident trooper program here, these are some of the other services you obviously get. In addition to us, we have the services of Troop C, which is, you know, our first and foremost resource. You have additional troopers that control your town. So if I'm working day shift by myself, by chance, there is a trooper from Troop C that also has the patrol of Talon. So I have that trooper to help me out, whatever the case may be. So there's all kinds of services, and that, that's twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. There is always a trooper from the barracks covering this town. Okay? If we're here or not here, they're still here. Couple more quick services. Our emergency services unit, like I told you, I was there for about nine, almost nine years as a trainer. So we have the canine unit. Anytime we need a canine, boom, I make a phone call, that canine's en route. Tactical team, we have a tactical situation, a barricaded subject, we make a phone call, that tac team's coming. Aviation unit, same thing, bomb unit, dive team. We have a fatal reconstruction team, we have a BCI unit, we have statewide narcotics. We have anything at our disposal, that's what you get when you have the resident trooper program. So it's just not the four resident troopers in the office, you get the entire state police at, at your whim. Major crime division, they're located right at the troop. Those are the guys that do all the big investigations, homicides, they're based out of Troop C. Troop C also has a CI unit. Their detectives are maybe a little, like a level below the major crime guys. But it's nice to have the CI guys, because if I have a big, big case, that's gonna take a lot of legwork, a lot of footwork, and my, you know, job is to be here in this town to do, you know, what I need to do for you folks, I can call those CI detectives, "Hey, I got a big case, it's gonna take me, you know, weeks to work this case out." They'll take it. And that's another service that you're getting, because you're having the resident trooper program. Kevin, if you could just, if you could explain a little bit more about your relationship with Troop C as far as where, where you're, where, where you're, how they fill in when you're not available, vice versa, you know, the relationship between where you hand off, between, between your office and Troop C? Well, you mean by, well, so for example, at Troop C too, just so everyone knows. So I'm the admin resident trooper here in the town. In order for me, or in order for the four guys in the office to be able to get reports corrected, a warrant signed, there's a sergeant assigned to the town, but he works out of Troop C, so that's another extra benefit you're getting, because you're technically not paying for the sergeant. But we have to have one so that he can sign reports and sign arrest warrants and search warrants and things like that. Yeah, so- I'm sorry, go ahead. No, I'm just, I'm wondering, what's, can you say the question again? Well, so, sure, so like, where, where, like your investigations and the, and the cases that you're working on, sort of, you, you have your own caseload, your own work that you do here, and then when you would hand it off to another state police unit, or where they would, where they would help out, something along those lines? Yeah, I mean, at any time, if we're doing an investigation, you know, and it may be something a little bit behind the scenes, or perhaps, you know, covert, we, we can reach out to any of those, that our BCI unit, or statewide narcotics unit, to pull them in to help us and assist in cases. It's the same thing with the CI detectives. They can come in at any time and assist us. And again, if the case is too big for us, we can always hand that case off to the detective at the barracks. So that relationship is really-
Can we add a little bit more? So, and there's an instance in which the resident troopers aren't available in one of our state uniforms. So for example, on the midnight shift, when the, the road troopers are the only presence for the town during that time. If they take cases in town, they work with the resident trooper's office, in order to make sure that they're staying on top of what's going on, so-
Right.
The resident troopers here in town may know people that would have valuable information, and a road trooper who works midnight would connect with them, get some information, they might help with that investigation. And in any instance, those detectives that we talked about, they may come out and will do a very small portion of whatever we're involved in. So, say we have the unfortunate incident with an unattended death in town, where someone passes on, and right away, we're not quite sure what exactly happened. A detective will come out and just do a, a survey of the scene and say, "Hey, listen, it looks like it's pretty much just natural causes." And so we can use that resource from the barracks to the town. And there's always costs. Kevin is one of the most tireless advocates I have of, maybe the resident troopers that work in the area. There's five towns at Troop C that have a resident trooper program. He's in my office approximately, conservatively, once a week, discussing with me the issues relative to the town, whether it's how he's using the speed enforcement information that he's generating, some of the new info we can, we can push out in terms of statistical analysis, or we can kind of drill down on numbers strictly for Talon. And, and we're talking about how to present that. We generated a month of report that, that shows a little bit more info. So anything that goes on here in the town, it crosses over to the barracks. They're not working on an island, and we are constantly backstopping each other's efforts to provide whatever services the town may need. So when Kevin comes in and we have a discussion about a particular aspect of what's going on in town, I can use troop resources to backstop his efforts, either whether it's additional troopers during the course of the day, detectives, a more robust presence at night, dedicated individuals for specific purposes. So for example, we're talking about the, the situation with car break-ins of stolen vehicles. I have, on a number of occasions, I won't tell you how many, I won't tell you how many troopers, I won't tell you what it was, but we've dedicated resources to the troop area, to include Talon, that were in addition to our regular patrols. So they're out there doing things that, they may not be in uniform, they may not be driving cruisers, but they're doing things that help not just the town of Talon, but the entire troop area to try to, to curb some of that, you know, people drifting in off the highway and trying to find a place where no one's paying close attention, and then scurrying back off into the night. So we do things in concert with each other to make sure that whatever efforts the resident trooper program is bringing forth here, we support it. He provides us the information, and like I said, he's in my office on a very regular basis, discussing about what else we can do for the town of Talon that's gonna support and make sure that you all are, are satisfied with the efforts that we're making. So if there's an issue or a question, he usually fields it here, and we discuss it along with the sergeant that's assigned. We come up with some sort of plan, and he comes back and he kind of briefs everybody who needs to know about what the next step will be. That answer your question?
Well, that, thanks, that's, I mean, I know what we're excited about. I guess I'll make sure it's out there. Alright, so looking forward, there's a few things on here, but I'll add a couple more. So with the speed enforcement issue, what we did is we allocated a few more bucks, and we are now dedicating several times a month where we're gonna be strictly, one resident trooper be strictly assigned for speed enforcement only. That way, he's not being called away to all the calls for service. He can focus his attention for three to four hours a day strictly on speed enforcement. And we're doing that typically at the rush hours, because that's where we're seeing all our speeding problems, is usually the morning rush and the evening rush. Probably worse the evening rush, because everybody's trying to get home as quick as possible. So just so you know, we're gonna be out there, and we're gonna be running enforcement on all of these roads. We've got all the roads targeted, so we're gonna be out there doing that hot and heavy this year. This year, we'd like, I'd like to start a citizens' police academy. One of our new guys in the office, I'm gonna assign that to him. We've done that many times out, out of the troop. It's just a great way, again, to meet people, meet the public. It's kind of run like an academy type of regiment. You'll be able to come in, you know, conduct classes, et cetera. I don't know if you know any more-
Yeah, I mean, we're basically trying to demystify some of what we do, so we'll go into some of the behind-the-scenes stuff about how and why we may look for operators under the influence of alcohol and/or drugs, and, you know, what does a major crime unit do when they come out? You know, how do we seize evidence at a scene? What are the things that people, that, that troopers are expected to do during the course of their shift that contribute to the overall safety of the town? So you get a little bit of insight as to what, what we do beyond, you know, a conversation like this tonight. So it goes into a little more detail. We've done it at Troop C in the past, I, way back in the day when I first started in ninety-eight, Troop C was my first command, so I came out here and I was a midnight trooper. We started a citizens' academy then. We've done them at the academy when I was a commanding officer there, and it's a good way for people to kind of understand how we operate. Sometimes, if you watch some TV, you think that if I put, you know, a fingerprint into a system, it's gonna kick me out. A response in the time that takes Kevin and I to talk about the Patriots game, that's not how it works. So we can kind of dispel some of those myths and give you a little information about how we operate. And one thing, before I forget, I wanna go back to the car breaks. So when we made those few arrests, back in two thousand, so two thousand and eighteen, I took a case of a stolen car on South River Road, it was an Acura. So sure enough, it ends up showing up in Hartford. So I went down, I processed the car, you know, now everything's really DNA more than fingerprints. Fingerprints are really very difficult to obtain. I know on TV it may be so easy, but it really is not. So DNA is the big thing. So anyways, I seized a bunch of evidence and submitted it to the lab. So the lab, again, that takes a time, a process to come back. And the only time you're gonna get a DNA get it, if it was a convicted felon. Because everybody now who's a convicted felon gets a DNA swab and it's on record. So the reports kept coming back, negative, negative. They said it was a male, but that's all they had. Well, wouldn't you know it, just a couple of weeks ago, this is over two years ago now, that hit comes back positive. Because now, that person who's sitting in Cheshire, who I'm gonna go get soon enough, he had to have his DNA swab because he became a convicted felon. So he's in jail now, he's got multiple car thefts about this long from all different agencies, including here. So now I'm gonna go through the process, open up the investigation, and I'll end up arresting him on a warrant. So, process works. So continuing to look forward, neighborhood watch program, that's another thing we're interested in starting. We're gonna look into how that really works, but the idea is kind of get a neighborhood that's interested in that watch program. We'll probably put some kind of a requirement on it, like you have to have fifteen, twenty neighbors involved, and it's not just one or two. We'll get you all involved, we'll have one contact person. We'll somehow get some, you know, whether it's through our Facebook page, the messenger, whatever, where you can contact us and let us know how things are going in your neighborhood. We may do quarterly meetings on that as well. But we wanna get more involved in the neighborhood, because that's just the way things are gonna, crime's gonna get solved, is by you guys telling us stuff. So that's something we're gonna work on coming up this year. And lastly, I reached out to all of our houses of worship, because obviously we're having a lot of problems, as you can see, across the country. I have reached out to all of the ministers and the pastors, et cetera. And actually, I'm gonna meet next week with site or new church folks down there. And again, just do a quick risk assessment, speak to them, give them a little presentation. And then in May, I'll be meeting with all of the Talon county pastors and, and, and folks that are in the houses of worship, which will be a good meeting, and at the same time, we're giving that presentation. So those are just a few of the upcoming things that we'll do in two thousand twenty.
So thank you for your time. That's my contact information, that's my email address, that is the office phone number. If you don't have questions tonight, or if you think of something later, you know, please feel free to email me or call, we'd be very happy to answer some questions. Yes, sir.
So in the last thirty-six hours, there's been two videos posted on the Talon information page by citizens who had persons on their personal property. Is the suspect that you're referring to, that you're gonna have an arrest warrant for, who I presume is the suspect who there's a very clear picture of his face on the front porch of a residence?
Right.
Is that the same person that was videoed following the mail truck?
No.
Who person's arrested? We're talking about two separate individuals.
Yep.
So that car that was, may have alluded to have been matching in both situations, different vehicle?
No, that's a Chevy that was backed up, that white car was a Chevy.
It's a Cruze.
Yep, Chevy Cruze. I talked to my car specialist guy, and he thinks it's between two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten Chevy Cruze. That is not the same individual in the other video. Two different cars. That car was a Honda, silver Honda, the other one's a Chevy Cruze. The, even the suspects don't match.
Okay.
That Chevy Cruze one, it's tough to see exactly what, you know, who he is, obviously, the video's a little bit distant. But we have right now, no leads on that.
Okay.
Both cases, I've been working with the United States Post Office with as well. So I've been in contact with, I have good contacts with the US Post Office, they're helping me. They have all kinds of great technology, so if I need it, I can use it. But we were able to make a positive ID on the second person, and like I said, that'll be the gentleman that will be taken into custody soon.
Okay. The second question is, there's increased conversation on that webpage regarding a citizen patrol organizing, or informally organizing. Is any of the information that you have in your pin map regarding locations that have been hit, or days of the week, or times of day that these incidents are occurring, would that be available for the community to be made aware?
Yeah, I mean, if we drill down, we can drill down, you know, with the new system we have, we can really drill down into, into some of that information. And I would ask that you give me an opportunity to check. We provide certain information to key stakeholders in Talon. We just wanna check and see how widely we can publish that, and to what degree we can. If they give us the go-ahead on that, we can, we can drill down into that and try to- And I, I concur with Kevin. One of the things that we've seen is, there is really no pattern to speak of. So it's, it's kind of difficult to, to say if you, if we really focus in on this area right here, that's, because some of the efforts that I made using some overtime and some non-traditional tactics, we might have chased them out of one area and they leaked over into others. So, we absolutely will try to make that-
With all, with all respect, and thank you both for your service to the community.
Yeah.
Having worked in law enforcement and four years in crime analysis, if you separate out the nature of the crimes, the time of day, the day of the week, for example, the thefts from the vehicles is different from the thefts of packages.
Right, very, very true.
So if you break that out, you can sort it down to the smallest detail, and I would say eighty-five percent of the cases, you can identify some pattern that can be recognized, and be more than happy to meet with you in your office and see if I can help you in any way.
Yeah, we can, if we can tell how many folks are traveling down a particular road and it had a particular speed, we can get down into that as well.
Right.
We can take a look at that.
It just, it takes time, it takes methodology.
Right. Takes personnel to dedicate to that kind of stuff, and, you know, the resident troopers are in the best position to do that.
Yeah.
Be happy to follow up.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Are you guys going to be doing the home checks? Like over the summer, when you go on vacation? We had that program a couple of years ago, is that the same that we're still doing?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. Yes, we still do that. So there is a form, I think it's online, I think it's online, and we also have those forms in our office. So yeah, so if you're going on vacation, you can come into our office, fill out a form. There are troopers that are on each shift who'll see that, and we'll do patrol checks by your house. So yeah, that's been a program that's been going on for quite a while. It's, yep. I, now I have a question for you, Kevin. You said that for the SRO, that you found that there was, that there was a value added for having, having Brian there. Yeah. And it's your recommendation, based upon your assessment of the needs of the school as far as the public safety aspect of it, that, that he should be increased to a full-time status? Is that, is that something that you think that, that you're recommending, based upon your work with him? A hundred percent. Yeah, it's, I mean, he's, and he's actually, Brian's here tonight.
There he is.
Don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no problem.
It's-
We're all about throwing people over the bus.
They go round and round, literally, round and round.
There's more tires, you know, you're just one of them.
Yeah, I can't speak highly enough of, of Brian and the job he's doing. I mean, just a quick example, I went up to the Birch Grove Pogs, I guess if you will, to visit, and just say hi to everyone, so I walk in there, and there's Brian in there playing ball with the kids. And then he comes walking over to me, and the kids are grabbing his legs, "Don't go, don't go, keep playing with us," you know? I mean, that stuff, that's, that's, that's huge. That's huge for the kids. And not only that, but when he's in the high school especially, and kids are coming to him and giving him information, that he relays that information to us, that maybe there's something going on in town, obviously, because you know how kids are, they know everything. So if the kids are telling him stuff, he comes to us and tells us what's going on in town, now we, you know, we can grab the people that are not doing such, you know, nice things. And it's just such a great working relationship.
And it's just such a great working relationship. And he does a fantastic job. And yeah, and not only that, but then he handles everything at the school, so that we're not responding to the school. So you're not losing a resource out of the town, constantly going to the schools to investigate things, because he's doing that.
And that's a direct line of responsibility, that if there's something wrong in these schools or any kind of questionable thing, it's coming to you?
Right, it'll go to Brian first. So if it's something criminal or borderline of coming, becoming criminal, Brian will obviously take that initial investigation. We talk every day, every time he's in, we communicate all the time. He's got a desk in our office, he does his reports there, so we're in constant communication with him. If it's something of significance, we will jump in and help him out. We would never leave him stranded. And I mean, if it's a case that's a little bit more involved. So the working relationship with the schools, I don't think has ever been better. I think it's the best relationship this town's ever had. And that's got a lot to do with the SRO program and the job that he's doing in schools.
And I support that at Human Services, because Nancy Duncan works closely with her department, and it's helping the families too. So I know we keep saying school, school, but it's also working with the families, doing a lot of preventive work, trying to help these kids and some of the conflicts that are happening behind the scenes that people don't usually see. So without your assistance, his assistance, we can do as well.
And then just, I'm sorry, I'm full of questions, because this much from the... As far, being part of the Birch Grove Construction Committee, we've had a lot of discussion about some of the new technologies that are out there as far as remote, basically remote observations, having cameras inside the schools. Not only so that, say if Brian's over at the high school and there's something going on over, or that there's, you'll have ability to monitor some of the other schools, so that it's not just solely relying upon the teachers or the administrators or Brian being there, but that it's something that, I mean, I've dealt with other schools where it's patched into the central command, and then we'll have an opportunity to observe that. Is there anything like that in the schools right now? Or is that something that, from a public safety aspect, that you think would be useful to consider, look into, whether the Board of Education or even us as considering on a public safety aspect of it, look into?
Well, I know the current need is not wrong right now. I know my sophomore fire chief communicate quite a bit about stuff like that. And we would like to be able to have that capability, so even if we did pull up to the school and we had computer screens and monitors, if there was some kind of Wi-Fi connection to the outside, so that we could see what was going on on the inside. I know, Brian, didn't you go to something in, what was it?
Yes, that was in Manchester High School. And it was directed about, they were going off in Middletown, what they've done with the new technology. And it was amazing what they could do.
Was it called mutual aid, Brian?
Correct, 100%.
So we already have a foundational piece in place. All the barracks are being outfitted with additional computer monitor and keyboard to operate this mutual aid system, which is a pipeline for video, for example, from a school to the barracks that can actually be fed to first responders en route, so people can see where the nexus of the problem is before we can get there. So we have that coming in, in the relatively near future. And then the towns will have to decide whether to contribute to that if they put cameras in and become part of that system. So we already have that, that foundation in terms of the capability to entertain those options. It's just a matter of how we figure out each town's ability to contribute.
And then, of course, last thing is, I mean, we've seen, my profession, your profession, we've seen the sweep of the opioid crisis, opioid issues, coming across not just from Hartford, but across from Lulamatic. We're sort of in that epicenter of crap, I guess, for lack of a better word. Do you feel that there is sufficient opportunity for you to present things, since we see that mostly it's school-aged students, especially high school students are the ones that are getting involved? And that we're seeing are having the most issues, including overdose issues and things like that? Do you feel that you have enough access to the schools to be able to prevent, present, present prevention programs, as well as be able to make appropriate prevention steps, so that we don't have a huge influx of issues inside the high school?
Yeah, I know one thing we were doing previously with the other school resource officer who was here, they were preparing lesson plans to go into schools, and I think the superintendent had those lesson plans out. So the idea is to be able to teach, especially from the middle school kids, some kind of educational program in there. Whether we bring back a DARE type of program, or we institute some kind of another education program for the kids, because I think that's something that's been missing. And that was something that was beginning to work on, and now we just need to continue that work, and get that educational program.
And that's with you, with you or the other officers going into the school?
Yep, or Brian, the school resources.
Bill, Mike, we also talked briefly about the vice principal of the high school. He came from Bloomfield, and one of the things they discussed was having someone not just like us to come in and try and talk, because a lot of times, some kids won't relate to us. Somebody that's been through it, that they can relate to, maybe their age, or been through the situation with the drug crisis and had dealt with it, come out on the positive side. They can kind of relate to them. So he was saying that people come in, we just start talking about this, having them come in and talk too, which would be great, and the kids can relate more to them than it would possibly us. So a couple of the options we talked about.
Yeah, there are some specific programs in that very vein, where you can bring in an organization who presents that piece, where they know who the people are, it was a very specific program, so you know what you're getting in terms of what they're going to be talking about. But they are people who have weathered that storm, and now they find themselves on the other side. And that's a conversation from somebody who's been there, to somebody who might not quite be there yet.
In that vein, I don't know if you'll be able to answer this question now, but we all know how prevalent the opioid issue is and the drug issue in that. How big of an issue do you find it to be here locally?
Specifically, the Talon or the Troop C area?
Specifically, the Talon.
I mean, I would have to gather, I guess, some stats. I don't know exactly the numbers, and I don't want to give you a false sense of it. It's a problem. I mean, obviously, it's a problem everywhere. I don't want to say it's rampant here. We have certain individuals in the town that are having issues and problems with it that we respond to. That might be just a handful for three or four people or so. But it's a good question. I don't have those numbers exactly to say that, but I wouldn't say it's rampant, but it's still a problem.
It's not, right. I know also, it's kind of cyclical. I happen to live in a part of town that has a nice lovely little campground, that, you know, once the spring comes to fall, we get a lot of transient people who have a lot of problems in the neighborhood with issues. So I don't know if we see that a lot, or, because to me, that's more transient necessarily than kind of homegrown, and how we can handle that. Because I know we had a lot of discussions in our neighborhood with issues that were happening down, specifically near the campground, with homeowners and stuff. And I just kept telling them to call you guys, but...
Yeah, I mean, I think I would agree with you that in that one specific spot, I think when you do get a transient of folks that are coming in there from other areas, I think we do see probably a little uptick in some of those issues. But again, I don't want to steer you wrong and say that we're having this massive problem, because I don't see that, but I still think it's a problem.
Right.
Because whether it's one or two people, that's a problem. So we do have it in the town. We do, from a service point of view, from a police point of view, you do have to respond from time to time to those. And we have a lot of protocols now set in place with especially the opioids and fentanyl with our department, you know, over the years, that we need to investigate it a lot more than I would say many, many years back. We see cell phones and really try to backtrack to find where this came from, who dealt in all that type of stuff. So it's an excellent protocol that was put in place for us, so... And I would make this recommendation. No matter what the numbers are, I would always, I would always treat the circumstances as if the next wave is coming. So with the education piece and the presence piece, and all troopers carrying the locks on their person and their cars and whatnot, if you want to be best positioned as time goes on, we're just going to act as if we're always preparing for that larger issue, even though it may never materialize.
I know the worst, though.
Right, so if there's, we can, we can talk about specific areas, but a lot of times, having been on the ground floor, this in 2014, we introduced the locks on to the state police. We have over 300-plus saves now. And I was keeping track a lot of that data early on in the program. And the age span for folks who had passed on from their addiction illness ran from 14 to 75, across the spectrum of gender, race, ethnicity. So sometimes it's someone you don't even expect. They may have started out with an injury that needed some pain alleviation that resulted in something that no one could foresee. So I would always, no matter what the stats say, prepare for the larger issue, we're going to hope it never arrives. So whatever it is that you think in conjunction with Kevin and Brian would be effective at the school level, that's a really important place. And then the wider community too. We talked about the grant earlier tonight. Those opportunities to educate people on how to manage their own prescription drug cabinet at home is really, really important stuff that you should emphasize here in the town. To keep that stuff out of kids' hands or anybody's hands for that.
I think that's the peak that we lose a lot. I think what you guys are doing in the schools is amazing. I'm a firm believer of winning the hearts and minds, especially when it comes to police officers in the world nowadays. The more you're involved with kids, the more you're seen as a friend and trusted. And I think everything that you guys are doing there is spectacular. I loved hearing about all of it. I think like what Nancy was saying, my next area of concern is the ones, the kids that are out of school, those young adults and that, and we lose track of them. We don't know how to keep track of what they're doing when we get them out of a confined school environment. So that's an area that I'm interested in what we can do better, because the lockbox is good and stuff like that, but how to get that information out to the people, because that's the critical piece here, is the people that we're missing. And we can't confine them to school, so, you know...
Because we'll put our heads together and we'll think of some things. You know, a couple listening to the grant opportunity tonight and the discussion on social media, there were some things that came to mind. But that's something we can work on. We try to identify how to wedge into that group of young kids who left school and may not be at college yet, or working a trade or whatnot, and see what we can come up with.
Yeah, I appreciate that. On your Facebook page, a lot of the stuff that you guys talked about on here, I didn't see on there, which I think, I think there's a lot of people, we see it online all the time, "What are they doing? What are they doing?" You can only share so much now, but if there were ways for you guys to list these events, so other people could come and think, we can get it out to more people, because you're everywhere. You're doing what we need you to do, we just need more people.
One other part of the piece of the puzzle is you have a drip disposal box that you recommend.
Correct, yes.
So that's a way that people can get rid of their medications that they no longer need.
I hate to say it, but I love it all the time. I'm always like, "Oh, I can go to the box, I can go to the box."
Yes, right.
Yeah, because I know they advertise in April, you know, the one drug take back day, but people can go at any time to drop off. It's right in your lobby, correct?
Yes, it is, absolutely. Accessible to anybody, anytime, day or night.
All the time. I've gone there at 11:45, because I clean out the closet and just, "I'm going for a ride." Sounds a lot worse than it really is.
So part of what we can do is, there is a Troop C Facebook page as well. What we can do is we can interlink those, and so if I get some, the troop to post something about that drug box...
Your pages can like each other?
Oh, yeah.
And recommend each other?
Yep. And that's been happening now too, because these other ones we just posted, I mean, it hit about 60,000, 70,000 people within a few hours. And then the larger state police page will pick that information up too. So he posts it, we hit, and then suddenly Connecticut State Police Page links that to their page, and suddenly we're talking to everybody in the state.
Thank you. It's obvious you guys are very dedicated to the community, and we really appreciate your dedication and service. Does anybody else have any other questions?
I'd like to go back to a little bit on the traffic enforcement. I know it's probably very early, so there's not really any data, but the Talon Green Project, that was an issue recently, where you alluded to possibly having speed enforcement, digital signs as you enter the green. Has there been any notable changes in the traffic patterns around here? Increase or decreases in accidents by any chance, or changes in behavior driving?
No, I mean, not that we've seen. But yes, we are going to eventually put up permanent digital signs somewhere up in the green, you know, coming in and coming out. Because the fear was that now that you opened up that with no stop sign, people are going to start moving a little bit quicker. So that was the idea. We already budged that in last year, so we already have them, so we're going to put them up. So we'll have to kind of see how that goes. We may do the same thing, be able to collect data from those and see, you know, what that's... And like you said, it's really early. It's just a month worth of data, wouldn't it really be valuable? So we will know a little better as the year goes on, to see how that is going to be. We can dive down into that very specific location and start comparing accidents from one accident to the next, so we should be able to say... The nice thing about our report writing system, and with accidents especially, I can call to our folks and get the data, because we write such detailed report, all statistics. I mean, they have everything down to the weather, the road was wet, snow, and then it pinpoints with little red dots every accident that happened in Talon and where it was. So the data is incredible. So that's one good thing about our report writing system, it's extremely detailed. And I can pull that data any time and say, okay, you know, I can tell you right now what our problems are. Our problems are on 195 up I Anthony Road. That's where we get all, everybody, you know, following two schools, there are a lot of factors in your process that will follow with our accidents.
Another comment, I'm sure you're starting to read ours, but the Parker case, and now update coming through, might be a good location for both, or a successful, if you're involved with it, because there's probably a number of people there who may be part of our residents that have retired in place there, or new residents in town that figure out an education about their community.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, yes. Well, thank you guys for coming. I appreciate it.
Thanks for having us.
Hey. A long night.
But the trouble is, we need to turn around.
We need to... All right. 8.4, consideration or resolution to approve a purchase and sale agreement in Town Talon and Stephen D. Williams for the purchase of the parcels described as overcross 22/k/020, 9.7 acres more or less, authorizing Michael Rosen, Town Manager, to sign the purchase and sale agreement and setting a public hearing thereon for February 11, 2020. So before we start this, we have your questions. Lisa, you have all of his questions, right? Okay, I wrote some down. I don't know if I got all the right words. She's much, much better than I am. So if we can't answer them, we'll go with yours. Maybe we should just go with the questions again, to make sure we have them. I don't know that we're going to be able to answer a lot of your questions tonight.
Do you want to introduce the business, or do you want to do the questions?
Do the questions first, so we get those, and then we can talk about the business. So I have, has land been approved? Appraised, sorry, appraised. Wetlands and butters, do they have the ability to bid on the land? Per the charter, what is the purpose and use? Was that of the land or of the sale?
Actually, before that, I had, what is the sequence of steps outlined in the town charter and the town policies? Have they been followed properly for this proposed sale?
Hold on, sequence of steps?
Outlying the town charter and the town policies, have they been followed properly for this proposed sale?
Then, per the charter, what's the purpose and the use? Was that of the sale or of the land?
What is the purpose of this proposed sale? Second part of that question is, what is it going to be for?
Sale proposal submitted to, and I spell, I don't even know what I spelled it, but it's not a real world word. So sale proposal submitted to...
Planning commission. Because that appears to be required by state statute.
And conveyance, uh, discussion with board of finances, we don't have. So that would just be the town council and then the town council sign off, correct?
Correct.
Oh, all right. I have them. You have yours. I'll send you what I have to make sure I have them. Okay, so before we get into the business of this, what we're doing is setting a public hearing. So when we set that public hearing, anybody can come and talk about, express any opinions or talk about anything then. And if anybody else has any questions, send them to us and we will try to get answers to them if you're willing to ask them at public hearing. With that said, Mike.
All right. So councilors, this item is on the agenda tonight as the next chapter in the TBA property development project. So the town owns the overcross portion of the parcel and would like to enter an internal purchase and sale agreement with the owner of the TBA, Steve Williams. In your background materials tonight, I quoted a portion of the town charter, which is section C ten dash three, entitled authorization for sale or purchase of real estate, which in order for the town council to engage in disposition of real property owned by the town of Tallinn, there must be a notice public hearing. The actual wording is the same manner as provided for in the adoption of ordinances, which translated means public hearing. So this step should be taken prior to entering into a purchase and sale agreement. So for tonight's action for town council is to read, to read the resolution into the record and set the required public hearing for our next town council agenda, February eleventh. As noted earlier, questions were asked, which I believe would be excellent to have answered for our next meeting. I can answer though that this public hearing step was missed last summer, so this action tonight will correct that mistake. So we'll correct about that. So that's sort of how we wanted to outline this agenda in, but as I said, the only action would be to set the public hearing at the next meeting.
So discussion on that, is it that one that was?
What page is that, the motion, the resolution?
That's going to be on your packets. It's going to be page twenty-four of fifty tonight. So it's the motion of the board drafters. Sorry, it's a little bit scratchy, but, Madam Chair three, I think you're going to motion that the following resolution be introduced and set down for a public hearing on February eleventh, twenty twenty at seven P M. We will tell the town council chambers. So be resolved by the town council, that it hereby approves a purchase and sale agreement between the town of Tallinn and Stephen D. Williams for the purchase of a parcel identified as overcross twenty-two dash K dash G R two zero, nine point seven acres more or less, authorizing Michael Rosen, town manager, to sign the purchase and sale agreement. Approved by the town council on January twenty eighth, twenty twenty.
So this is just setting the public hearing?
Setting the public hearing.
Okay.
I would start.
Any discussion?
The only thing I want to mention too is that at the next meeting, I'm going to invite Mr. Williams to be present for that meeting to answer direct questions from the public if he so chooses. And then also our planning director Heidi should be able to attend as well.
I'm sorry, did you have, did you have a question about wetlands specifically?
Did I?
I thought you had a question about wetlands specifically, Nancy.
Yeah, that was an important part.
Yes, sorry.
As I read in the town, wetlands in the United States dash twenty-four of butters and others have rights to bid on the property, which is why I'm so confused why this is just going directly to that hearing. There's that first step in the whole.
Okay, so that was the wetlands and butters. Okay, I have that.
Eight dash one.
Eight dash. All right. Okay, any other discussion? Any more to answer me on this question? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstained? Motion passes and we'll have the public hearing on the eleventh, our next meeting here at seven o'clock. If you have any other questions or anything, submit them to us prior to, because then we'll try to get answers or resolutions. And you're going to still have to come up and ask your questions at the meetings, but hopefully then we'll have answers for you.
Thank you.
You know?
I think, I think the best thing is just put in writing, send it to the town council, and then that way we will have the questions that we can forward it on to the appropriate people so that we can get the answer that you need, that you're looking for.
Okay.
Hopefully.
Eight point five, appointments to vacancy in various municipal boards and commissions.
So there is another appointment we made for David Ross, supporting formal road to serve our transportation advisory board for the term eleven six nineteen to eleven eight twenty three. Is there a motion to, to that appointment?
Not without to.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you, everybody.
Any staying? Show caring?
They're just making a point. Or reservation letter is also submitted by Kat Kennedy for the Tallinn Public Utilities Corporation. So there's an opening. Is there any audience or public interested in serving on the public? How's it going?
We also have a lot of other opinions, so stay with our minutes, please. What's out there?
We've had a good number of people submit letters of interest. We probably have a half a dozen people.
Really? I was hoping, I guess, I'm badgering people, so I'm hoping.
We have a number of, across multiple board of commissions.
Perfect. All right, we are on to nine now. Uh, nine point one, discussion in, this is all business, discussion of possible action on regional performance incentive program and grant applications.
So this item, we can let read now for a few weeks since our last meeting. It's the idea of whether we want to engage in submitting our our pit for a regional performance incentive program grant application. For, for Tallinn's, the two pertinent grants with our grant application, which can be resolved under one resolution would be to apply for a region-wide plan and metric data grant through PROG, and then also a schools dash municipal back office consolidation cost benefit analysis implementation plan grant. So like I said, we can do both with one fell swoop. It's important to note that planning metric data portion of the grant, there's no match required for the town. But for the back office consolidation, there's going to be a twenty percent match from the participating towns. And for that, for that grant application, should we be, it's a competitive grant for both, but should we be awarded that grant, I will be able to serve on the selection panel to select the proper vendor for Tallinn to conduct such an implementation plan and cost benefit analysis.
Okay. I'll recognize a long one, so good luck.
So, Madam Chair, if you're in the campaign, I'm sure to endorse the regional performance incentive program projects, proposals and authorize town manager to sign all the scary agreements and take all the scary actions to allow for the town's participation in this program. I don't believe I actually need to read every word of it, but are you the last bit of now, therefore, it is law that the town, Tallinn Town Council is hereby endorsed. The regional performance incentive program, project proposals and options, town manager to sign all the scary events to take all the scary actions to allow for the town's participation in this program.
Second. Hey, any discussion?
Okay, I just have a question. Um, is there any way that instead of spending money, because the second one is a match, that we can get our in-house people together and talk and take a look without spending any money? I mean, they know us best.
That's, I mean, certainly, I mean, that's, that's another option, but the, that we've done it a few times now. I think every five years or so that we try to do that. I think sort of, as we sort of heard during the goal setting process, that we'd like to see all sorts of regional collaboratives and ideas. So this was something that was an opportunity to apply for grant. I, you know, I'm not forcing this.
Right, I'm, I'm just saying, if our own people can't get together and find out something to pay for, and consultants come in to look at the same information that we've looked at every five years or so, um, you know, is there a time limit on the grant? Would we have to reply, apply by?
Um, so February, I believe, um.
Okay, yeah.
It's in paperwork.
That's fine. Uh, um.
Yeah, yeah, February.
I just wanted to ask a question because.
Um, I kind of like the idea of having a consultant come in and do it. I think we've looked at it a few times and it's just never really gone anywhere. I like the idea of somebody else coming in and looking at it and telling us, um, non-biased, if we have an opportunity there. Actually, I'm happy to move forward with this grant. I thank everybody who brought it forward, um, from the town side and that, and all the hard work you put into it, and hopefully we can find some resolution, and also that the board of bed has, has indicated their support for this also. So, you know, it's a joint.
It's like an opportunity that, you know, I did meet with walls as well about it. It wasn't a surprise. And he has informed his staff of the idea. I've informed, Lisa's here still, and she's told her staff about the idea. So, um, you know, certainly the staff is looking to meet about it still.
Right.
Yeah, no, for sure.
I was asking.
Yeah.
So, um, anybody else? No, all right. Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained, uh, motion passes? Nine point two. Now we're moving right along here. Um, discussion on the town council goal to explore creation of a new commission on disabilities, standing committee.
So this was framed tonight under old business as a discussion. I didn't know if we were quite ready to actually pull the trigger and vote on this committee tonight, but it's part of your materials tonight is a draft mission statement that I compiled using, first of all, the feedback we had received from the first time this, this item was on our agenda. So I compiled a lot of the, the meat of that meeting into this, this draft vision statement, mission statement. Also, I met with Bev Belli, our human services director, and talked about it. And thirdly, I've used other communities' mission statements that have commissions on disability. So it's really good material to sort of help craft and tailor this to Tallinn. So what's in front of you is my best shot at putting a draft mission statement together. Certainly, we're open to revisions, but ideally, what we would do tonight would be to try to get this into as best shape as possible so that at a future meeting, either two weeks or four weeks from now, we can actually establish a committee or commission, sorry.
Okay, um, so there's only, you know, action for us to take with this right now?
Is there any revisions you'd like to make?
Right, so what I'd like to do then is just have an open conversation with councilors, if anybody, does everybody have enough time to read this? Do you have any feedback to offer? Anything that you'd like to see or not see?
I, I didn't know that we were, because I looked back at our minutes and I didn't see anything that directed us to go to this much detail. I thought we were still in the discussion period, um, not, and actually the creation period. We haven't identified if we are already actually doing most of this through the other commissions or committees that we have, through the other staff that we have in the schools or in human services. So I was a little concerned to see all this work getting done without what I saw, like a, a direct initiative appointed by us, our direction from us. It, like I said, seems like we're supposed to be in the discussion period instead of the creation period right now. We haven't even decided we needed this yet. From what I'm looking back at in the minutes, I don't see that. So I was confused.
You live? Well, from my perspective, we had the meeting, we talked to people. I don't think this is, uh, not because any work, right, and need done on this. I think what we had.
Well, Mike did a lot of work.
Well, whose direction? This is, well, this was the next step in, in the process, which Mike told us about, where we had a commission, you know, we have to establish a, a mission statement to decide on, and then the committee, stuff like that. Like this is just, it's just a discussion at this point, Brenda. This is what he pulled together as a mission statement. We are now discussing it.
So shouldn't the committee that forms create their own mission statement?
No. Mike?
I do have a note, Brenda. I, I came from the December tenth meeting that I have a note to myself that January fourteenth or twenty eighth, we're going to be looking at the mission statement based on the surrounding area of town. So that's, that was my direction.
Right, so, so right, looking at mission statements that other surrounding towns have. But it, it seems that we've jumped a couple of steps. Um, that's just my concern there. And I didn't go back to the time, but I looked back at our last one, we had everybody here, um, which was whatever, two weeks ago, I was. So I apologize for missing that. Again, I, I don't know that we have established that, um, everything that's listed there is not already covered by someone in the town. And that we're not reading that to the real.
Well, but I think that, again, this is a draft mission statement. That this is something that we are adopting so that we can at least go forward and we can start looking at some of the options, some of the opportunities and sort of identify what we're looking at. So we can determine whether or not other, there's other agencies that are working, that are already covering it or that we could work with to develop it. So I think that that's really where we need to start. We need to start with a draft statement, you know, a draft, a draft mission statement, so that we can at least identify what we're looking at, so that we can go forward to these other groups. And also that it'll give us an opportunity to eventually start looking and putting in money for grants or for other, for other funding. Because you need that, you need that mission statement in order to present it, even if the draft mission statement, be able to present it before you can go forward to request for funding from other organizations or agencies. So, I mean, I think that's the main thing is that if this was a final, uh, mission statement, then I, then I agree. But I think it's something with the draft mission statement that at least gives the indication of what we're, where we're going, where we're heading, and what we're looking to achieve, so that other organizations that may, that we may be working with can see the same thing and, and then let us know, hey, look, we've got this covered, or we've got this covered, or this we could work together.
Um, so now that we have a potential mission and we are coming up with a list, how do we take a look at where we, where we, what we're already doing in town? Do we even assess what we're already doing in town and if this, we have overlaps?
Well, again, I think that's, we start out.
I think that's the point, the commission though. The point of the commission is to educate, to inform, educate and advocate for the community. You know, for the, for the disabilities community, and well. I mean, people that came here, I think they clearly don't think that we do. You know, the couple of meetings that we're having, people here, you know, they're asking for this representation. And, you know, Bev is here, so we can, did you have a chance to look at this, this, um, yeah, did you have a chance to look at this, um, this draft mission statement?
Uh, I actually think it's not too far reaching, um, in the sense that it's a, you know, it's a draft. It's something that probably a committee could handle. I was in the beginning a little curious about what the expectations would be. We were, as a council, we were required to fund any initiative that people came up. But I think maybe the first step is trying to look at, you know, kind of what the community are missing links that we might have. I, I don't know who's going to staff it. That's part of my curiosity on that one too, but.
But overall, you don't find it like that this is, you know, you're, you're okay with the way that the mission statement reads? Would you have any suggested changes or anything?
At this point, no, I'm.
And I'm assuming like if we, if the commission gets established and they want to change the mission, they would still have to, they would be able to do that, but they have to work through us because the commission has reported to the council. So if somebody has things that they want to change, it would still have to go through the middle of the process. This is just simply what you pulled together based off of feedback meetings and.
And there's, there's some things that are still up for discussion. For example, I just, I plugged in seven member commission. It could be nine, it could be eleven, but I figured that seven's a manageable number of folks. And then, of course, depending on how many people are on the commission, you have to worry about minority representation and all. So those numbers are still flexible, but in terms of the actual mission, that's what I was hoping that we could, uh, come to an agreement tonight on.
Especially in lay also having a quorum too, because I know that there are some boards and commissions that we are trying to fill. Again, audience, if there's anyone that's not on a board or commission, we're going to need that volunteer assistance by making sure that we can actually conduct that business for those boards and commissions. Because there have been incidences where a virtual meeting is brought to order and then they can't conduct any business because there's no one there to help, other than town staff and maybe the chairman or vice chair.
Yeah, for example, we're doing this by people. They have a problem, we can use a quorum, so we need to be asking to move that up to seven, so.
In terms of commission goals, I just wondered, based on the quick conversation that was had, will it be ideal to have the primary goal being exploring town services already in establishments and remaining apprised of new programs as they are brought forward to the town?
Say that again? Say it again, a little slower.
I know, yeah. So essentially, it's, uh, a, a goal or a primary aspect of the mission statement would be for the commission to explore town services already in existence and remaining apprised of new programs as they come before the town to assist individuals with disabilities.
Exploring existing town services.
Would you need a commission to do that though?
Right.
And I mean, I think it's also covered.
We were already starting to do it with the opiate thing. We're trying to, just trying to gather information before we ahead decide if we want to form a commission. Is, is that something we can do without actually forming a commission? Just to find out exactly what, what we have in town and who's doing what and that sort of thing.
That's what we're asking. Yes, absolutely.
Well, I think that's also covered in the, uh, in the, the last bullet on the commission rule. Analyze services for personal needs with disabilities provided by the community, both public and private agencies, and make recommendations. I mean, I think that's covered inside what the commission is. My, my point is, do we need a commission to do that?
Right.
Well, I think it's something that we can, I understand your point.
You mean that one bullet, I mean? That one bullet, I think.
No, no, I think that. Yeah, no, no, the, that one bullet.
That one bullet.
Can we find out what we have first and that's a, maybe we say we only need a commission.
Yeah, sorry. I, I maybe reading it more as like this is sort of a ranked, ranked list. So I just wanted to make sure that was sort of at the forefront, that we're making sure that the commission's aware and well connected to our services. So I guess that's what I was getting at. I actually.
You're saying, if, if it was ready, to move it up, which, well, is it?
Yeah, I, I think it's not. It's, yeah, it's, so that was just my interpretation at first read.
But I understand what you're saying as far as do we need the commission to do this out to, to. But I understand what you're saying as far as, do we need the commission even do this out to, to do this? What, or should we, uh, take the first step and see what's out there? I think that, I mean, it's, it's a valid point, but I think it's something that with the commission, with the commission, even if there are services out there, to have one singular umbrella sort of organization that can tie everything other, everything together, work to build that synergy and build the, uh, build upon the, uh, what's out there and then be able to report back to us, so that we don't have, you know, one, one organization coming to us and reporting on something and another organization, we have a singular umbrella or, uh, committee, committee that can sort of oversee, help direct and then report back to us.
Educate, and inform, educate and advocate.
Right. Because based upon with the speakers that were here before,
Yeah.
that obviously there's, there's disconnect, that there's a lot of people doing a lot of different things, but there's no central umbrella organizing it all. Just like with the OPIO, uh, issue, where there's a lot of organizations that are doing the same missions and accomplishing the same things, but nobody's really overseeing it to sort of be able to direct it and then report back to us as far as where, where there's, uh, how things stand. And I think that's, that's important on these two major issues.
I think this is also an opportunity, a large opportunity for, um, for higher advocacy. So rather than individual parents alone going to the Capitol to advocate for services or caretakers, you know, going to advocate for services that they think are lacking, this gives a little more weight behind it. You know, the commission at the town level, he can help advocate for some of these issues.
Are there any, do we have, are there any regional organizations that do that?
Well, there definitely are, you know, there are definitely state organizations, I mean, regionally, like outside of just Connecticut and just being-
No, just for, for, yeah.
So we've got, we've definitely got, we have sources that are regional, like, you know, the Hockenham Valley Dial and Ride is not just Tolland, you know? And that's definitely an area that has been, um, it's been brought up as an issue, you know, transportation. So we have Dial and Ride, but it handles, um, Ellington, Vernon.
It's limited, it's just, um, transportation on a limited basis to, um, Tolland, Ellington, sometimes Manchester.
Vernon, right, yeah, it's, it's very limited. So that's a resource that's out there that maybe this commission can say, you know, this is the issue that we're having with that. This is what would be beneficial. And then we can work with other towns and say, how do we, how do we fix that? How do we help with that situation, you know? So even if it's just educate, inform and, you know, advocate for more resources from someplace else. So to me, like, it's, it's a, that's gonna be a big part of this commission. And this is what we're going for here is, you know, advocating, educating and informing, you know, the entire community, so.
And I think it's difficult because it's, uh, to, to gather all the resources. If I was one person presenting it, because it's, it's an age, you can be eighteen years old with a disability up to, you know, ninety-nine and your needs are gonna vary and how do you encompass everything and, you know? I mean, there are gaps, that's reality, but.
Right.
My issue, my issue is I just need to be more educated about the issue.
Right.
So, um, I, I just think that the communication with the, with the folks in the community is important and, and hearing from anybody who's providing services is important too.
Well, that's, I think, uh, I think Mike did a great job of pulling this together and looking at, like, if you look at it, the members shall be, um, either people with disabilities or direct caretakers of people with disabilities.
Yeah, that's actually a standard that other communities have as well. You wanna have that voice of representation on the ground.
So, um, do we have some to go back to, to, to have my watch? And, anybody have a second? Second, all in favor? Any opposed? No, we have passes, we're not gonna discuss it, we're just gonna, it's a little faster. Okay. So I think, you know, the, this year does a good job of, you know, it's the people that are good and beyond, it was people who are definitely invested in it.
Actually, it, it was really well done, thank you, Mike. I, the only concern I have is that I know a few people that were interested in dropping their voices early on in the process, aren't here anymore. So I know there, there are initial people, yeah, so I, I do, I just want to make sure that's the, that, that brings that in.
Couple failed, and you guys had a chance to see it?
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody was great, thank you very much.
Yeah, no, I just wanna make sure that there's millions, but.
They, they have, you know, special needs adults that they have to get home to and put to bed, that's why.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so I just wanna make sure that if we were to make any actual decisions that we give enough time for the community to provide that input or perhaps propose a workshop where there could be more open back and forth between respective members.
Everybody did read this, the statement, thank you, Mike, great, great job.
Thank you, yeah.
Everybody was really impressive, they really appreciate, um, anything that you allow.
Thank you very much.
Did you just make a motion or did I miss?
Yeah, we didn't make a motion, go past, we had to make a motion to go past ten o'clock.
I couldn't hear you. Oh, okay.
Not that I ever really wanted to make that motion, but it's been, so we're just gonna let it go, Bev, right?
Okay, I didn't know what it was, I'm sorry.
So, um, all right, well, I would suggest that, and I'll reach out to the people who've reached out to me also, that, you know, people read the, the mission statement and make sure that it's meeting the needs of what people think. And, um, this is just like us, our first chance to kind of talk about it. So if you guys wanna spend some time chewing on it, looking at it?
Perhaps, and I'll be last saying that this is a draft resolution that was corrected by the town manager, that is under consideration, we're looking for public input and for members of the community that may have an interest to provide their thoughts on the commission's establishment and the benefits it could have.
Yeah, definitely, that's, that's definitely doable. And, and Mike, I think this is great because honestly, I wouldn't expect you to just throw something on our agenda that said, let's talk about a mission statement without giving us something to talk about, so.
Thank you. So is there any specific direction? Like, I'm gonna do the last as Steve recommended, is there any specific direction at this point?
Two quick questions, we're gonna have to assign a liaison, correct?
Oh, well, we haven't gotten that yet.
We're understanding, so. Right, I'm saying, once we get a commission, that's a liaison, we need a liaison because of this commission. I really should use them. And, um, the others, okay, one other thing. Oh, do we have to assign a, somebody from the, a town staff person to oversee this commission or be a liaison because of, um, you know, policies or grant writing and things like that?
It's certainly up for discussion, I know I've spoken with a few staff members who are here tonight and, uh-
And do they have the capacity to add one more thing to their?
I'm afraid to look over there.
Exactly.
That's always been my-
My staff assistant, I've been without, uh, having somebody in my office since the end of November, so we're kind of strapped. But I, I think hopefully once, um, Alicia starts and we get a train, we'll have a little more time. And Mike is media coordinator for the town, so.
I'll support as much as I can, yeah.
Remember those boxes?
I feel like you need to be supportive right now.
And something else we, we added to the agenda that, um, Sustained with CT actually has a whole focus area on disabilities and how to, um, add that language into everything to do with, everything from like the charter, um, to policies and making sure that we're always examining this, so it's something that would get us excited.
One more check, guys, one more check.
Exactly, say, where can we find goals that overlap?
Yes, so we still have to add that at some point to the agenda, yes.
Just to run a point, other than what you're to quantify is the frequency of the meetings. And then, yeah, just copying who, who would be a liaison and who would be a town staffer. I mean, that's just, that's a separate along the road, but just making sure it's a part of the-
Yeah, I think, uh-
Because it'll show what it's true to.
But it'll, it'll be in those, those systems.
Uh, I, well, I, I don't know if, if we would do that with the mission statement or if we would do that, if we would wait till like the commission was put together and that group that is assigned says we need to meet once a month or whatever.
I guess I just consider it all the same lines as like establishing the number of commission members, you know, my little party representation.
In that essential, yeah. Right.
So, so, so my, my thought on that, Steve, just from experience I've had, is that generally, the, whether it's the council, the selectmen, whatever it might be, whatever your, your body is, usually they, they develop a mission statement so that the, the new commission knows what they're doing and also comprises it so that they can accurately, um, select the right people to take that, take their roles of joining the commission. But you're right though, that once the commission's formed, they can kind of set their own chairperson, how often they meet, where they meet, obviously you wanna have an accessible location, everything like that, open to the public.
Do, do we have to post, um, the meetings because it's a mission? Like, do we have to pick them for like the whole year and then we post them? Isn't there some requirement of that?
That was, yeah, obviously, it was just like every other, you know, calendar.
Yeah, so when first, when, when they're first established, it'll be considered a special meeting, but once they establish their, their regular schedule, then they, they would no longer be special meetings.
Okay.
And they certainly are welcome, we're, we're, you know, it's public meetings, you post the agenda, the minutes are gonna be taken. Uh, town hall or anywhere else that public buildings certainly post the meetings. It can be daytime or nighttime, that's all up to the, uh, the commission.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Good first pass, you guys wanna, like I said, take it home, chew on it, look at it, make sure it meets the needs and that? You know, we'll have it on another agenda, um, coming up. All right, we're moving on, we're moving on, we're at number ten, report to town manager.
I will be quick.
Love your ready.
Everything has been said, I'm ready. Brenda touched on the census complete town committee, we're up and running. If anybody's interested, our next meeting is February twenty-fifth at two P M. I've been in heavy budget meetings with each of the towns' department heads to discuss operating budgets, um, so that's going along. Joe Courtney visited our January twenty, of course, then he and I spoke about crumbling foundations and lots of other things. So that was my first contact with him. But I saw him again two days later at the Tolland County Agricultural Breakfast on, uh, January twenty-fifth, where, um, Dana Champagne and Tim Ackert were also there, so that was nice to see everybody at the act breakfast. So I'm working on the capital budget presentation to be held February thirteenth at seven P M in this room, fun. Tomorrow, I'll be joining the recreation director for a meeting in South Windsor he has, and he said it's like for your town manager to work day. So I'm gonna be joining him.
Did you get a shirt?
No, but I'll get some lunch, everybody.
There you go.
Here is the legislative breakfast that the high school was mentioned earlier. This Thursday is the monthly senior setup birthday lunch at twelve noon, I'll be there. And, uh, I'll also be attending Kirma's annual meeting this Friday in Hartford. That's our, uh, inter-local risk management association that we, we work with. And I think it was mentioned earlier that February eleventh is the next first rural building committee meeting and February fifth is the next E D C Economic Development Committee meeting, that's all I got.
Eleven, adoption of this.
Chairman, you got any change in motion to adopt the minutes from January eleventh, special meeting minutes, January fourteenth, special meeting minutes, January fourteenth, regular meeting minutes, and the January eighteenth, special meeting minutes.
Second.
Kurt gets that one, Kurt gets that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, wait, no, oops, sorry, Mike, hold on, we have, uh, January fourteenth, council minute meetings need to be amended for the following corrections and the reporting of the planning and zoning commission section. Should be a public hearing was held for a re-subdivision to create one new building lot and to prove the stipulations. And the last sentence should be amended to read updating some regulations. The commission might use its second meeting of the month to focus on these updates. These were requested by Heidi, so.
So I'm recent, my, uh, motion, I'm intending a motion to adopt the minutes as outlined, as amended. And eleven point one, eleven point two, eleven point three, I assume, and eleven point four. Those are some events, so.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Are you opposed? Are you staying? All right, correspondence, I'm ready.
Ready.
Okay, we received, um, a question from a resident, Kate, to ask about what are tax stabilization fund balances?
I responded to her.
Yes, and, um, was responded to by the town manager. We received another, um, email from a resident, um, Brittany, to ask that we consider applying the, um, pride flag during pride month in June. We received some, uh, data on educational numbers from Cassandra. We received an email from, uh, resident Matt, who, um, was talking about the, uh, the budget and the reduction of staffing at town schools and how he was concerned, um, with those changes. We received an email from Shay, also about, um, the town budget and, um, the impacts that it will have on our education system. And she feels that those were negative impacts. To Paige. We received in, um, a question from Amanda Doyle about the U I S F account.
Yes.
Did you respond to her about that or is that something that could, yeah, you can take that. Well, he's looking that over. We received an email from, um, Susan, who was here earlier about, um, what inclusion is. And she gives a great diagram so that we can understand the difference between inclusion, segregation, exclusion and integration. We received an email from Jody, um, about a, uh, zero-based budget and her concerns for what that would mean, um, for residents. And we received an email from Lisa asking that we consider, um, creating a ban on tolls in town, toll roads, the toll taxes in town. We received a couple emails from Susan concerning, um, East Con about employment opportunities for residents with disabilities and some, um, information about job opportunities here, a couple more. We received an email from Karen also asking for us to display the pride flag. And we received some information from Karen about substance abuse and mental health services. I only have emails that we received prior to two P M today because I was in meetings since then. Don't take pity on me, Mike's spending meetings since eight thirty. So going back-
I'm just a little, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna share the presentation.
Lisa's going to respond to.
Ah.
We're gonna share the presentation with them.
Are gonna share the presentation with Amanda. That is everything I have, and we copy these and put these in the minutes. So, um, more information on each of these, it will be in the minutes.
Okay, thank you for my paper book, keeping it so pretty. Rose gold. Thirteen, chairs report. Okay, so I have chair hours coming up on February sixth, here at six thirty in town hall, right in that room over there. If anybody would like to come and discuss any topics, um, Board of Ed meeting, uh, the Board of Ed is budget meeting. They've added another meeting, holy moly, it's after ten o'clock, um, February sixth, and it's gonna be probably starting at seven thirty, I'm assuming it's gonna be here in chambers. Talked about the openings on the boards and commissions, I'm glad that you've got six people, we need what, six more?
Five more?
Five more, a few more, we need a few more, we're gonna keep pushing that. And then I had a little thing just that I wanted to say here. As you may be aware, we are currently in the budget season here in town. The departments are all building their budgets right now and they'll turn them into the town manager. And then he will do a combination and have a town manager recommended budget that will come to us to review. At that point, um, Mike will take all of them combined and then make a recommended budget to the town councilor. Then we will start our process of reviewing all of it and coming to a decision on what the budget will be for the town that will be recommended at our front end. Ultimately, it's the town citizen who votes on the said budget. During this time, there will be lots of rumors and false information, words taken out of context, left quotes thrown around and a whole lot of emotion. I encourage you all to reach out to your elected members on any board, um, talk to them, ask them questions directly, be open to conversation and debate. Every voice matters equally in this conversation and the person who yells the loudest is not always the most effective. This is a process where we can all learn from each other and try to find balance for all fifteen thousand residents. I encourage you to listen as much as you talk, it's a good one for me. Ask as many questions as you need to make sense of what is before us, I never have a problem with that. And be respectful of someone's opinion, um, even if it's not your own, be open to someone else's point of view. One team, one vision, we're all one talent here. In that vein, I'm reminding all of the councilors to please take time to review and be ready, um, to talk about the capital improvement plan. Mike is gonna be giving a presentation, so, um, get five years ahead of you, there to look at, review and, do you have any questions? Thirteen?
Thirteen.
Thirteen will be the day. That is it for me. Communications and petitions from council persons, um, before I start that, I've gathered the issues to date that I am working on with Mike to get, um, all of these requests on upcoming agendas. March is gonna be fully loaded with the budget and, um, I don't expect any of these issues that we're talking about on this forward list here to kind of make an appearance in March because we're gonna be seven, eight meetings budget-wise. But I've been keeping track of everything, gonna go through my list, if I am missing anything, please let me know. These things will all be coming up on agendas, um, within the next few months. Commission on disability, review again of the, of the mission statement and where we are with that. Commission on substance use and, yep, substance use disorder and mental health. Brokerage firm update and discussion, uh, cemetery policy review, um, review of applied policy. And a meeting with, uh, I was thinking about what you asked for in the last meeting to meet with all the different boards and that, and I think that might be kind of big, so what I'm thinking of trying to get on a schedule here is a meeting with boards and commissions chairs or representative that they send to kind of get an update from all of them, their goals, our goals and where we can find synergies. That's what I have on my list, did I miss anything? Did I miss anything?
Communications, we discussed how Sustainable with CT made, uh, one of their goals was to create a group that looks at all the ways we communicate as a town. You basically take an inventory and take a good mission statement.
Communications, townwide communications. And in, um, and you said something about, um-
Yeah, and sustainable C T would be doing that, and thus, and they could do that.
So this could be something that we could work through the sustainable. Well, didn't you say you wanted sustainable C T at some time too, or?
Yeah, we do need to look at that at some point because
Time, really.
Time, time, time limits, employees, you know, the number.
Alright, so those are two other ones that I have. Anything else, any other petitions from council person?
Yeah, the roles and responsibilities of liaisons.
Oh, yes, there it goes.
So, and it's councilors, I guess, you might as well put that in there too. Maybe just sit and chat. Planning and zoning brought up a few in there, or many huge goals. One of them was a possible fire sale on the hookups of the sewers. I forgot to add this one, I'm sorry, Kurt. Once here, have all the land used, chairs get together and chat.
Yeah, I don't think, well, I think they would have to do that, they're all independent, independently elected boards, so land uses.
Yeah, so.
P Z C and Z B A and that, and we can't tell them that they have to get together.
Right, no, we can't tell them, right.
So I would think that.
What else did they say here? A town council involved initiative to help, or to help encourage properties to reuse their space or rehab the property. You know, using a tax abatement, like.
You mean like make it like the, like the deification campaign?
Yeah, like give them an incentive, you know, sometimes if a strip mall is, you know, twenty years old and it looks dilutive, people move to another location for their business instead of getting somewhere better. That's something that we'd have to do.
I think that was a good point with them. Great. Then I saw you had something.
That was good, I'm gonna be a broken record about vacancies on boards and commissions, but the email is actually up and running, there wasn't an issue at first, so those emails do get automatically forwarded to myself and Lou to review and touch base with Kim. One thing that I spoke to Kim about, one of the recent appointments, as she strongly encouraged, is anyone that's interested in serving on a board or commission to attend one of their upcoming meetings, see what the process is like, see what the functions are like, make sure it's a good fit for you, rather than jumping ahead first for a meeting. And I'm not liking it resigned into the sort of process. You know, I want to properly vet people, but we don't want them to think it's gonna be easy or very involved, or then be disappointed by the results.
Do you want one, one twice? Thank you, thank you. Fifteen, public list participation, any subject from the jurisdiction of the town council, three minute limit.
George. Well, I might as well.
Leave the rice.
My main concern is I don't think we're getting out to people enough about how bad the budget is gonna be this year. We hear about the emails, a lot of people being concerned about cuts at school, they really have been hoping those meetings are really long drawn out about midday. I don't think people realize how bad a shape the town is in, I think we need to get that information out there. The loss of the foundations, the loss of reassessment, the higher sewer. I think I would assume they were gonna start paying on two birch groves next year, if I'm correct. We have, what, these five more years on the one that no longer exists? Plus, we're gonna start paying on the door, if not, it all gets added on to how much we pay because nobody's gonna do it for free. They're gonna want their money. So we need to get out there to people. Less money from the state, all these different things, we're not putting it out there so that people know, so they don't panic on the day of the meeting that we have a lot of problems, even with zero budget increase, we're gonna have to raise taxes, if I'm correct. Yeah, okay, so. Also on the schools, are we gonna be paying on both schools for a number of years?
No, birch groves paid off.
The original birch grove is totally paid off?
I think it's the high school where it's still hanging out, right?
Yeah, high school, yeah.
Yeah, we still, we have, um, high school.
I thought it was a twenty year ago.
Well, well, yeah, but my daughter was the first class there.
Yeah, but the addition was two thousand and two.
It was the addition, you're right.
It's totally been paid off, it could have been, and it was before my time, could have been a expedited amortization schedules and may not have been a whole twenty years in the schedule when it was put together, but it was so long ago that I don't have that detail. But I can tell you now that it's not in our debt payment scale.
So, I just think we gotta get out people so they realize, because like I said, when I go to the school board meetings here, really all they're worried about cutting, I think it was a total of seven thousand dollars on a forty million dollar budget about freshmen in school. There's a lot of things that we could cut or can't cut, but we have to make the people realize, or let the people realize what the problems are with our, with our money, we don't have so much money coming in, and it's less than last year. So how do we adjust for that? There's gotta be cuts everywhere, everybody's gonna have to hurt a little. And it's not, the school is still asking for an increase, so it's not a cut, it's reduction in the increase.
George, we will be sharing like the meetings, they're, like I said, they're, gosh, I think we, we literally have like seven or nine.
March is a very happy month.
March is like, we will be advertising all the meetings that we have, and, you know, anybody is welcome to come to them, so. Put the meeting stuff out there, bud.
One quick point, Mike, when is the revaluation gonna be presented, the results of that, is that?
The final reval?
Yeah.
You have to know these steps.
The end of January is when it's due to the state, so.
I think like the third of January is due, right? Two days, I think it's, twenty eighth, so I think we're gonna. The thirty first is due, so we have three days. Yeah, I thought it was two. That's true, right, so we have to do it on Tuesday, so you're right. Is Dan correct? Anybody else?
Age of a perky man.
Mike, I am seventy one, Bill's drive. First of all, I wanna thank you guys for open public hearing for the town meeting in my street. But I actually have more of a procedural question, I'll save my questions for that public hearing. I found a document out there from September of this year that was assigned by you, Michael, for that villa sale, is that now null and void?
Um, I'm familiar, isn't it? So actually, I spoke with our town attorney about that very issue because we were curious, and so was Mr. Williams, was curious about that. So according to our town attorney, that the document is, that it's not a hundred percent null and void, like Mr. Williams still has access to the property, he can walk the property, he cannot be doing development on the property at the moment though until everything is rectified, so it's something that he, there was, it was exact wording that the town attorney used that he said you need to rectify as soon as possible though, so that's why we're putting forth a public hearing.
So my second part of the question is, so there is an application that's currently in the wetlands committee that has a grading plan that includes that land, so that be invalid now?
So the timeframe of that is actually going to be, I believe, after the February eleventh meeting, we did, this is what I talked to the county about.
So I guess I just feel my one concern happened. It seems like, if I look at the process, and I know many councils have followed this in the past several years, but this is another situation where it seems like an application has gone in, and there's issues in the application, and now we're going back trying to fix regulation, so that application, and I apologize, town council or zoning committee, but that application has fifty foot buffers on it, and the regulation is a hundred foot. So now we have an open hearing to say I wanna change that, town. Here's another one, that's another open for you to change the regulation for something that's not there. So as a citizen watching this, and I, for those who don't know where I am, I'm on the corner of all the epicenter of this. It seems like there's a consistent series of steps that are trying to help this move forward, and there's not a concerted effort talking to the neighborhood about what the impact's gonna be. So I just, I appreciate Mike opening up, so I thank you for taking a look at it and have a chance, but just, there's some stuff in here that just doesn't feel like there's enough open conversation of impacts on the neighborhood, and we're allowing this thing going through, and I've stated before, all about economic development, but I think there's a way we can do this in a more balanced, and I just wanna make sure we got a chance to talk about it.
Yeah, as, as we talked about at the, at the chair hours, you know, it's, you're, there's different sections of the government handling this, right? So like you said, we have nothing, we can't do anything about the wetlands piece of it, but, you know, there was an issue identified with how we handled the piece of it that we had, we're taking the steps to kind of correct that, and it, this is again, an opportunity, it's gonna be a public hearing, so you can come and express any questions or comments or anything that you have then, but it's limited to the piece that town council has, you know, it's like, I hate to say it, but it's literally like the basketball hoops of government organization you have to go and talk to.
So part of it, the benefit will be, as Steve said, I mean, I would be interested to go forward to join the apartment because I've learned a lot in the last couple of weeks, how it works. So really, I've met with Michael, wanna be a part of a solution going forward, as a longtime Talon resident, I know the economic development. I just wanna make sure we're doing things in the right manner, clear cutting a bunch of land just does not seem the best use of dollars if we could sell and find money for the budget, but we'll follow the process, I just wanted to ask some questions specifically. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Michael.
Just to address one thing about the sale, I'm sorry, is that the one thing that you also have to understand is the sale of any property, especially that piece of property, we don't get any, we don't get any money out of that.
It goes to state.
It goes up, goes back to state, so we get zero out of it. So I just wanna make sure that, when you said that we can get money from that sale, we won't be getting anything from it, but I just wanted to.
No, I, I, I also pay state taxes, so I think it's similar, like you have two hundred thousand and a dollar, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, that's sixty, Woodfield's guy, neighbor of Mike's, and just, you know, as Mike said, proponent of E D C, you know, we desperately need development here. I like what the liaisons said earlier about tourism being a key factor. Having grown up in the Thousand Islands area above state New York, having lived in the Woodlands in Texas where we have pristine areas and planned communities that are strictly adhered to from a, a process and development perspective. I, I'm hoping that, you know, having said that, a number of different meetings, whether it be council, whether it be planning and zoning, I'm hoping that there's a due diligence process with, with what all of the respective committees are going through. My fear is, and whether it was said in jest or not, you know, sitting in the last planning and zoning committee meeting where Mr. Murphy says that the electric blue needs competition, and it would be great to have an electric blue too right across the street. Whether it was said in jest or not, I, I'm concerned about those types of cavalier comments because there, there tends to be some truth behind them. And when I look at, I'm assuming that we've spent as a community tens of thousands of dollars on the, on respective consultants that have done work for us, most recently, I believe, Gorman in New York in twenty eighteen. Beautiful proposal. And I think if those proposals are adhered to from the subject matter of experts, I'm not aware of anyone on planning, zoning committee or on this committee that's a credentialed commercial real estate developer. So that we need to listen and review what the experts recommend. Gorman in New York, a minimum of one hundred foot buffer with the development areas. I'm hoping that we don't cavalierly take that and just toss it aside because they're the experts, I, I don't, again, I'm not aware that anyone here or on planning, zoning is credentialed in commercial real estate. So I'm just hoping that we all go through a thoughtful process and do what's right and, and make the right decisions and go back and revisit some of those proposals from the past because again, they were put together from, from people that really clearly know what they're doing, so. So I thought, thank you.
Thank you. And just to kind of like come back on that a little bit, so we can't all sit down, like legally, we can, we can't sit down with planning and zoning and wetlands and all of that and have a conversation like that because we're all different governmental entities that are driven by different things. Planning and zoning is strictly, they're, they're zoning regulated, inland and wetlands, I believe, is highly zoned to where we write our own organisms and stuff, so I don't think we can legally sit down and have a conversation like that. We have to stay in our swim lanes, so like when I had a conversation with Mike, you know, for us, our swim lane in this is just that piece of property that we have, what we have to use it for, sell it for, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it's kind of like, I, I'm a hundred percent sympathetic with what you guys are going through and dealing with, and like I said, I've talked to quite a few residents and just said, you know, at every opportunity that you have, be your advocate, you know, go to these meetings and advocate for that piece of it, you know, but we can't, we can't jump that lane, so as much as I would like to help you out with something like that, or anybody else, you know, for any of the issues in that, we've got swim lanes that we have to stay in, so our hearing will be regarding just the, the sale, it's not even really, it's not even the sale, it's a, it's a, it's a.
So it's a purchase and sale agreement, just so that Mr. Williams can grade the town's part of the property, doesn't mean, he's, he's not paying for the property yet, that happens after the, all the plan goes through the planning and zoning process, wetlands process. There's multiple opportunities for things, you know, to be fleshed out over time. I think he has a cutoff date of twenty twenty four.
Three year, he's gotta, he's gotta plan in twenty twenty three, he has to get to that.
Yeah, and, and like that entire thing, he doesn't get to buy that property until all of those other areas approve. His design, his plan, his.
Well, he doesn't, his design is so clear, there is no, that's part of the issue, there is no, there is no plan.
Um, part of the purchase agreement does say that he needs to abide by all rulings of the wetlands.
All the other planning and zoning.
So if we can review that wording during the public hearing and make sure it's.
Yeah, that's, to Brenda, that was the big one, because there is that overlap of what he's trying to do in the planning, zoning to the sale, so that's why I think Chris and I, they are linked together, so I didn't understand, so thank you for clarifying that, how the different groups work because his whole point of this is for planning and zoning, he needs it for the runoff. And so that's why he needs this land, and being the abutter of, his property runs this way, and this runs this way, I'm now gonna be construction, water runoff. And so that's my biggest concern, and, you know, there's a bit of an issue. And reading some of the past minutes on this, there seems to be more of a capitalist's go for it, and so as a neighborhood, we just wanna make sure, and like, and none of us have been in town for a while, so we get economic development and think there's enough, just twenty eight acres we could do something with, without causing a major disturbance and risk that it seems we're taking. That's all, we wanna make sure it's clear.
I appreciate that, you know, and like I said, you know, I appreciate that, and I think use your opportunities at all of the different places that you have the ability, you know, to speak on, and, and all the different steps along the way. I'm sure you guys will be back at our meeting.
We will be following the process.
Exactly. You know, that's, that's the only thing I can tell you at this point is, you know, to follow the process, you know, speak when you can speak, advocate, and all the different entities will.
Thank you.
Just, and again, this is, you know, a question or comment out of, you know, looking for adification of, you know, I think something that is within your swim lane is, is the purchase, the sale and the purchase, correct? So, so my question, and again, not understanding, my question would be, would there be with, with Mr. Williams, great guy, but does he have the commercial expertise for that type of job? You know, going back to my earlier, earlier comments about having the right people do the, to do the right job. You know, a classic example is look what happened with Duncan Donuts Park, you had a developer who went there, did not know from a commercial perspective what they needed to do, and they were kicked out behind budget, over, over, or over budget, behind plan, et cetera, et cetera. So is he the right fit being a residential developer for a commercial property? I don't know the answer to that, but again, that's why I, I say to you all as it relates to the sale, have you done your due diligence, and is this the appropriate sale for the appropriate individual to do what needs to be done? Don't know. But I, you know, again, from the corporate sector, you know, when we outsource for a vendor, there is a vendor management process. I just can't call up somebody and say, hey, you know, I saw your name in the Yelp page, again, hypothetically, I saw your name in the Yelp pages, come on in, let's, let's do business. There, there's a vetting process, there's a vendor management process, it goes out for bid. So that's what, you know, again, trying to equate corporate life to, to government. There's some similarities, a lot of different.
We try that all the time, we get our hands knocked all the time, I tried anyways, I'm a business person too.
But i- is that an option for, I mean, has, has this been vetted out?
I mean, I think that's a question where I don't think that there's been anyone that's really put forward another offer as far as commercial development, that property.
I don't think anyone's ever, I've talked to a couple of builders locally, and asked if they were approached about this, and they said no.
Well, it's not a matter we can't approach, we, that's the thing, that, that our restriction is we can approach.
So if I came to you and said I wanna build something, so I, this is just a question, right? I want to use the property to build a commercial thing, I could propose to the town to say I would like to use that eight and a half acres for something? Is there a process for that?
Probably have to go to planning and zoning, I'd imagine.
Yeah, I, I still don't know, I'm just a question, like, because I just, I mean, that's an option, say, listen, I'm willing to invest two dollars in the land and.
You have to have, you, you have to remember that this has to be used for economic development, so you have to have the ability to access and economically develop.
No, no, I, no, I got the digits, a hundred percent agree, Kevin, but would there be a process for me to submit a proposal if I want to suggest purchasing land with a, with a game plan?
I'll be your, I'll be your business partner, that's, I'm serious.
I just said, that's the one we're trying to figure out, and we, again, I know we're gonna be out for which is public hearing, that's what we're trying to figure out as a process, how this happened, that a developer happened to be there, and he's had a track record of trying to go through here. I got it, but it just seems like from a. I got it, but it just seems like from a public, it wasn't even, and I talked to the builders, did anyone even, not get, get be approached? Never knew this was an opportunity to even say, hey, we, we have this, anybody interested in using this land to?
Kind of landlocked, though, I think that's part of the thing, it's, it's landlocked, so you have to kind of own Steve's property to get it. So, if you want to buy Steve's property.
Well, Steve's property used to be landlocked himself and then he bought a property and changed it, so it came down.
Well, exactly, that's how, so, you know, like now, it's landlocked by his property, so unless you're gonna put a road in at the end of your house and go through that.
Or partnership with Duncan, or partnership with Duncan, so there's, there's multiple business things with a partnership with Duncan Donuts behind him to do something, so there's just, and I'm just saying, all I'm saying is it's an opportunity to allow someone else to have, to go after it, there's a lot of different ways to construct a commercial deal on it, that's all I'm saying. Not saying it's definite, but just was that opportunity put out there?
And we have a huge opportunity, I mean, that, that's the gateway to, to town agreement. So, so, so the, the right development can be, you know, a huge draw, you know, logistic, you, you, you look at the leaf keepers, you look at, at the Yukon community, that can be a huge draw up for, for activity. The earlier comments, you, 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 you pay the $100 in the race and you get $350 back, boom, if, if we have the draw.
Because we knew it was there, man, even as a neighbor, I mean, if the right developed up there, could be very beneficial on my property, right? So I can go to West Hartford, right, there's neighborhoods along, so there's opportunities, so it's not only.
I mean, we understand, so I think, I think that.
Into public, public scary discussion or something.
Yep, yep, we're good, we're good.
I think, but going, but going, but going back to what Tammy said, there's steps and that this is one, but there's also, it's gotta go through planning and zoning, it's gotta go through everything else, so there's a lot of other steps. We're sympathetic with what you're saying, we understand, but it's like, we're just one part of that and that we need to take a look at this. You've given us information to consider and that the, at the public hearing, this is where some of these issues will be brought up.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I just want to make just one comment, just from a process standpoint, at the end of the day, you know, Mike's our CEO, we're kind of the board of directors and you guys are shareholders, we need to have your opinion and your insight through the public hearing process to make those decisions if we're kind of doing that corporate to government.
Is Mike off?
Embarrassing. The, the, I just wanted to add, I, I was gonna agree that we should probably save a lot of this discussion for the public hearing, but the one thing that, that goes back, you know, before my time here, but some of you were here, was that back in June, the council at the time authorized the town manager at the time to sign that letter of intent that's in the packet. So I'm not sure where the letter of intent came from, but that's what started the ball rolling to get the purchase and sale going. So, that, that's okay, the part that's not, that we need to go back and rectify is the purchase and sale portion of it. So, the letter of intent still stands, if this is what, as far as I know.
Okay.
We're, we're constantly agreeing with that.
You didn't explain it to me, and not, not now.
Yeah.
Not here.
No. Any other public participation?
Anybody else want to? Well, go on, go on, go on.
I know, it's just time for everything, right? Lisa Burns, 2/14 later. Um, the reason I had come to you today is just to let you know that Joe Courtney has been doing a lot of webinars, specifically for founding foundations. There's a webinar coming up on February 3rd. In order to attend this webinar, you need to contact Joe Courtney's office and get an invite from the assistants, whoever are there. There, uh, this particular topic is gonna be talking about tax breaks and also, oh shoot, I lost it. Tax breaks and, oh, low interest loan funding. So, some of the information that I found, um, just, I think would be very helpful to our citizens and to you as, as part of your goals. So thank you very much.
Listen, if you could make a request, just if you could put that out and make over discussion or something like that.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'm not sure, I mostly wanna publicize it to, but I'll give it to you guys.
Yeah, if you can let me know, this is just so I can put it on the town's page, so it's more official.
Yeah, yeah, I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else? That's three times, okay.
And Jerry, you got a motion to adjourn?
Well, I was gonna, I, I just, a quick question, as far as I know, that Steve and I discussed some of the other nominations, if that's something we need at this, at this meeting as far as.
Can you get this, please?
Okay.
Flosh, a favor?
Yeah.